The township.
The township is getting the Smithfield Township water supervisors. We just want to be excited and comfortable. I would like to leave what's right. The two are your father, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this home. Much. I'm having a little illness. Probably has actually had to. Myself, I'm here to try and buy share of one of the responsible right there. Township manager Julie Pyle, I'm engineer, this is Hudson, and he's still there on the character. And also two other township personnel, then Sally, administrative coordinator, Alex Jackson. He is a conservation recreation director. First order of business, consideration of the January tenth as a part of the meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So.
And that motion by Mr. Albert second. One of them, have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With the consideration of the obligations, we have gratification of the community in Smithville twelve thousand four. A general company announced about one hundred fifteen thousand fifty dollars forty three cents. We also have the consideration term bill, which are eighty two thousand nine dollars twenty seven cents. Do I hear the motion on bills?
Both agree.
Motion of Mr. One, do I hear the second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Albert, any questions? Hi.
Aye.
We will proceed with this listener report. Have you had some cool news, or at least cool little news?
Yes, with. The. Water Gap. Case dealing with the. Conditional use application for the drug rehab facility. If you recall, there was an issue with respect to. The denial by township of the conditional use application by Water Gap Capital Partners. They appealed that matter. And the Monroe County Court upheld the township's. Decision in denying the conditional use application. The matter then went up to the appellate court, which was the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania. And there again, I argued the matter, and the Commonwealth Court again upheld the township's decision. In denying the conditional use application. And then the Water Gap Capital Partners appealed the matter to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. Where again, that matter was. Not argued, but briefed with respect to the matter, and the Supreme Court. Has issued a decision that they will not hear that appeal. Again, the PA Supreme Court is not an court of law, they they only hear cases they want to hear. Similar to the US Supreme Court, so they have denied their request for an appeal. So short of a reconsideration, which I believe is not going to happen. Or short of an appeal to the US Supreme Court, which would be extremely costly. That case is going to be the township will sell in on that balance.
I know we'll get to it later, but can you talk about briefly how that relates to the last stipulation that we're more than concerned?
The stipulation is, if you recall. Once the township had denied the application for conditional use application. Water Gap had sued in a separate lawsuit from federal court. Saying that the township abused its discretion, was discriminatory, did not do the right thing with respect to their. Case, so that's been a federal court case that's been pending against the township. The township has received word that the plaintiffs, the people who lost the suit, now want to dismiss that case. I suspect it's because of the decision that was just reached in the PA Supreme Court. And that case will also be over and done. It's being dismissed with prejudice.
Thank you, Ron. Okay.
And other than the other things, you know, dealing on Smithfield Gateway, pretty much has been most of. I think most of January, I guess, we're average.
Yeah. Awesome, thank you. All right, Missy, anything that you want to know?
Just one, when at the earth engineering was at the park. Yesterday and, oh, yeah, yesterday and today, and they should have completed their infiltration testing. So we should get the results soon. And then River's Edge Bike Park, we are working on that, we're looking hopefully for. Construction possibly start in the spring, maybe early summer.
Aye, what's that construction event?
This is going to be.
Yeah. What is that construction going to be?
So there is an existing comp park there, right? And the rain gardens have filled in with sediment and or they were not constructed correctly.
Uh huh.
So basically, this is to correct. The construction of the rain gardens and also include an impervious surface over the pump park. So to eliminate any future sediment.
Okay.
And May is due because when is our NPDEX final on?
So your renewal is due, your submission is due in May. So that's six months prior to, so you're, yeah, five or six.
Thank you. So we'll move into all the mystery of three quick matters or two quick matters. First, the consideration of the Smithfield Gateway Phase one eight two documents. Doug has sent us some suggested motions, but I'm going to allow him to explain all of that.
Thank you, my name is Doug Elspeth, I represent Smithfield Gateway, the developers of the project along two oh nine. Well, in fact, the township began for all the resistance, especially their professionals, specifically. Our Ron in helping the review of documents for a successful closing that took place a couple of weeks ago. That resulted in a couple of house cleaning items that needed to be taken care of. One of them involved, the last time I was here, we got an approval for a closing escrow agreement. That that Mark Wolf's office was going to hold on to some documents in escrow until everything was in one place at one time. And then once all the parties agreed, escrow could be broken and the various documents could be recorded and distributed in a very specific order. That had anticipated that the letters of credit were going to be delivered to Mark Wolf's office. However, what happened instead was that they were delivered directly to the receiving parties, that being the township and the Smithfield Sewer Authority. So that became, in essence, no need, because the closing went through. It was completely successful. That the escrow agent Mark Wolf's office has now asked that we. Have another letter of crew that basically instructs him to destroy. The closing escrow agreements that had previously been approved by the various parties. So my first request for a motion would be to. To approve a motion to for the letter. To destroy the closing escrow agreement because it is no longer necessary.
If this is the.
Yes. Then a whole other thing on that.
All right, I will motion to sign a letter of address to Mark Wolf, as far as the township has elected not to utilize the proposed closing escrow agreement for you to approve by the township. In conflict, need by, and among Smithfield Township DEPG Motion Associates, LP Smithfield Music LLC, while walking. And Newton Williams, PC. Proposed closing escrow agreement has not been fully executed. But I think.
No, you. Would you miss it one better, do I hear a second? Second, second, two eleven, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second housekeeping item refers to the letter of credit that was issued for a while on. When that started. It was under DEPG Moja. The title was actually transferred over to Smithfield Music LLC. It's actually the same principles that are involved with both organizations. It's just a different corporate entity. And that was part of the development agreement that the township required that we wanted to change the name of the entity. That we had to get permission from the township in order to do that. We went through that process again at the last meeting. But now we would like to replace that letter of credit. From the same banking institution with a new one in where the applicant is Smithfield Music LLC, as opposed to. DEPG Moja Associates LP, so that motion would be to allow. The new letter of credit to be issued, and if that is successful, what would happen is the bank would. Overnight a new letter of credit to the township. Once it is received by the township for morning delivery. To be notified, then I would come up and pick up the original letter of credit and overnight that back to the bank. So.
So moves, do I hear a second? Second, Mr. London, have any questions? All in favor?
The third item is with respect to the letter of credit for the.
Doc, I'm really sorry, Michael, what was your vote?
What?
I didn't hear your vote.
Yes, aye, aye.
Thank you, Karen.
I'm sorry. The third housekeeping item is that it's time to renew the letter of credit for the pad improvements. At with Provident Bank, and there's approximately a hundred thousand in the existing letter of credit. But based on documentation from the township engineer, that's actually from last July. There's a little over twenty one thousand, it's actually twenty one thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and sixty cents left of improvements to be done. So requesting that the township approve the allowance to reduce the letter of credit to that amount.
Okay, anyone here submit motion?
I moved.
Motion of Mr. Albert, second, Mr. London, have any questions? All in favor?
Thank you very much for your time, if you perceive the appointment is out, we will be starting construction next week in the wall.
Thank you.
That's yours.
All right. Next is the presentation of our conservation and recreation director, which revolves around the commentary for the renaming of Sambo Creek, so I will add Dr. Jackson. And his.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so there are two, Alex Jackson, Director of Conservation and Recreation, I've been in the room this evening. So there are two creeks in Smithfield Township, which are supposed to be renamed, as you can see here on the map. The first one is Little Sambo Creek, which is technically an unnamed tributary, but that's the common name right now. Closeout of Lake Hala, they've proposed a new name to replace that, Little Sambo is Swan Creek. Sambo itself, which flows mostly in Smithfield Township, also along the border of Stroud Township and into East Stirlsford Borough. That creek is proposed to be renamed, one of three potential options currently undefatable, the first is Palmanting Creek. I may have mispronounced that, but basically it's the name of the American individual. The two is Lanyalonape Creek, and the third is Brushing Mountain Creek.
What was the third?
Brushing Mountain Creek. Does the board have any questions on this?
Well, the way that you're going to accept public comment, is that by email or?
Public comment could be during the meeting this evening, or via email, if it's whether the board have the like many things.
Who approves this name changes?
Alex.
The US.
Yes. I kind of like Brushing Mountain Creek, although it is a secret or whatever.
Sounds fine with me, I know that like Ohio residents would have consulted on the first one for Little Sambo, and then Swan Creek. Lot of important symbolism there, on the second one. I mean Brushing Mountain Creek is fine, but. Yeah, I'm open to anybody's thoughts, certainly everyone is going to be. Impacted by this.
I have, yeah, no opinion one way or the other, I think, but as long as there's opportunities for residents, especially those that are living along the creek to provide input, that's the most important thing.
Only important things to note too, is this was attempted years back, but no formal application was actually submitted, so that's why it wasn't changed. To reservoir run. No, I wanted that. Risk. Awesome.
You're picking up with the thing, Mr. Chairman, is we're also now accepting. Letters of interest for the Environmental Advisor Council, if anyone in the public would like to express interest in possible appointments for EEC. Please email alex@smithfieldtownship.com.
Anybody have any comments, Corby? Dr. Jackson, go.
So, so it starts in Middle Smithfield Township? The two rivers.
The upstream. Now the two streams.
And then it had waters for Sambo Creek, or yes, you know, waters in Middle Smithfield Township.
And then it goes through Smithfield, skirts over to Stroud, and it goes, it ends in East Stroudsborough?
Yeah, it's a tributary of the Broadwood Creek, so the influence is, I believe, in that area, yes.
So. Are they all included in this name change? Like, do they have to approve that as well?
That's a very good question.
I can answer the question. My name is Kaitrin Zeichel, I was a former board member of the Broadwood Water Association the last time. We actually did submit a petition to the US Geological Survey, but there was public comment from all the different municipalities. And after five years, the BWA just gave up because.
I mean, they know municipalities filed.
Well, not a municipality, no, the BWA filed it. And then they sent out the application to the various municipalities, but yes, US Geological Survey will send the per place name to every municipality, I think that's common for that.
I mean, I think, I think Middle Smithfield probably should get the priority since it starts in Middle Smithfield Township. You know?
You don't send them, yeah, I'll send them in the application and we would also, I mean, Dr. Jackson would also, we'd have them. And so we're doing it several.
And has it been determined, has it been determined that that Sambo is not somebody passing?
There's, there's no actual lineage that anyone has been able to find, or they just conjecture.
I know that was in a letter from East Stroudsborough. I read that on, I think, like, twenty ten.
Right, yeah, there's, there's no, it's not actually following documents that anyone has ever took place, it's just one story that was told at the time. It was remarks that it was a Native American princess, thank you, one gentleman, whatever, they came up with at the time. But we've been able, unable to verify that actually took place. So all the municipalities that were involved in that original effort are interested in all signed letters to that. Certainly, see this follow. All right. Alex, thank you very much. Now we're going to advance, which will be continuation of the conditional use hearing, without the minus three minutes in a minute. That's all you can take now, but it was. Thank you. So this started at six nineteen. Ron, do you want to?
Yeah, this is just a continuation of the public hearing that began. On December thirteen, at that time, Attorney Farrell, who is present, who presented the testimony of Mr. Dan Harvey. Who I believe was the owner of the project, and Mr. Harvey had been. Thropped and recalled several times by various counsel. And at that point, it got to be late in the evening, and it was decided that another hearing would be needed, which puts us here tonight. For continuation of the hearing, so I'm not sure if Attorney Farrell has any additional witnesses, and so she can receive, and then we can move over to any of your chapters.
Good evening, everyone, Amy Farrell again with Catwoman Stewart, and just to, I think, tag on to what Ron just said. You'll remember, we did, at the close of the last hearing, we did say we were bringing Chuck Nicholas, our engineer back this evening. However, our planner, you recall, was not available for tonight, so we did talk about having Chuck testified tonight, so that we can keep this moving. Certainly be crossed by any opposition and any additional questions by the board, and then schedule the next date with our planner. That will be our last witness, is at least our expectation as of right now. Obviously, subject to reservation of any additional witnesses we might to call on rebuttal. But we would anticipate that next, the next hearing that's scheduled would be the last witness that we would present, and that opposition would be there. With that, unless there's any other questions about the procedure, and we are, I would go ahead and call Chuck Nicholas.
Very, very good, you do tell me square or arm to tell the truth, tell the whole truth, and have you bought the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And Chuck, if you would, please provide your name and business address.
You're welcome to sit there, here by counsel, or you want to put a chair here, as long as the sonographer can hear you and everyone in the room can hear you. Your wealth and sit, if you're going to stand to show some maps, that's okay to.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
Okay.
I'll try and speak up.
Thank you, Chuck.
My name is Charles Nicholas, work for Barry Ibet and Associates. I've been there for six years. What else?
Your business address, just.
Okay, five twenty five Main Street, Stroudsboro, Pennsylvania.
And you, are you a licensed engineer in the Commonwealth?
Yes.
And if you could just please briefly describe your education on employment background?
Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. Before working for this firm for the last six years, I had my own company, which is a civil engineering company for twenty years. And I worked since nineteen seventy seven for three other firms.
And have you testified previously as an expert witness before municipal boards or the courts of the Commonwealth?
Yep.
And you have included in the premarked exhibit packets at A six. A copy of your C V, turning your attention to that A six, is that an accurate and current statement of your credentials?
Yes, it is.
And we would be moving to recognize Mr. Nicholas as an expert in civil engineering, or have any questions?
No objection? And no question about the board, any plot here by the chapter of attorney or anything. No objection, Mr. Ron, then he's admitted as an expert in civil engineering.
Great, thank you. Chuck, have you visited the property?
Yes, I have.
And are you the civil engineer working on the proposed treatment facility at issue this evening?
Yes, I'm the project manager.
And in that capacity as project manager, did you oversee the preparation of the plans and the associated materials that were submitted with the application?
Yeah, that.
Were you also then involved in the ongoing plan preparation and. Were you also then involved in the ongoing plan preparation and presentations before the planning commission, as well as communication with the township engineer regarding this proposal?
Yes, I've got everything together, where there were experts in our office, whether it be in, you know, field testing and door surveying or drainage, they would be called in on the project. I basically oversaw all those different areas.
Now, as part of the initial application submission, LVL, the township's engineer, did prepare two different reviews, which we marked at applicant seven, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, LVL completeness review, and applicant eight, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, LVL application review number one. Can you just briefly just describe to the board what is included in terms of that review process and how that works?
Sure. The per review is a completeness review. And that was, that was that way. So we proceeded from there to receive a technical review. That technical review, going through it, we prepared provisions to the plans and resubmitted those plans. And we received a review, a second tactical review, from those revised plan, that the planning commission that we do.
And just so we're clear on the record and the board can follow along in the exhibit packets, we have included in A nine what we've called the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three responsive submission. Is that the submission plan that you just described to the board?
That's correct.
And you said that is the plan set that was reviewed by the planning commission as part of their review, is that right?
Correct.
And so with that occurring, and already said that is employed with the board in action with the proposal?
Yes, it is.
Now, as you sort of referred in, in the opening, as Mr. Harris explained already, last month, with respect to the application, there is an initial threshold question of whether or not conditional use in concept is covered on this property based on the current zoning code. So just want to spend a couple seconds on that, if we could. Kirk, what is the location of this property located in?
R one.
And based on your review of the ordinances that they began today, do you have an opinion as to whether the use as currently proposed is a use that is permitted by conditional use in New Orleans districts?
Yes, it's annual township ordinance.
And did the township engineer agree in his review that the use is permitted by conditional use?
That's my understanding of this.
Now, the conditional use is further required to meet the specific provisions that are contained in certain sections of the ordinance, and we'll get into those in more detail in a moment. But just as a general matter, do you have an opinion as to whether the use as proposed in your recent little set satisfies each of those objective criteria?
Yes.
Unless, if we could, first, send a few minutes on the existing conditions of the property and then run through the specifics, please. Now, there's no, for the record, it's shown up on the, on the EFL there. But it is in different plans included in the A nine, responding as per submission.
And then you say it on the slide, and they can see what you're proposing. So we would just have, you don't want to get away from the supervisor, there you go. And then I'll say it on the slide, hopefully they're going to be able to see you. If not, who are you assuming they're?
And again, just for purposes of the record, Chuck, can you identify, this is sheet two of six, what is the sheet title and number?
Sheet title is the existing features plan, and there's an EF, or existing features, that one on the bottom right corner.
And if you could, please, then refer to that existing features plan, describe the property as it currently exists.
Sure, it provides thirty-one and a half acres. It mostly runs along Coscap Hill Road. That's a area to the east side of the property. To the north, there's a speech slope and Coscap Road, and these right up into Cherry Valley Road. Cherry Creek is over to the west side of the property. From Cherry Valley Road, Coscap Road goes up in elevation. And inside property, mostly developed, golf fields, ruins, sanddraps. There's some hills to it, mostly along the perimeter.
If we could, that generally to the the conditional use site plan itself, in respect to other plans, please.
Right, although in property, see the two pink areas, those are two parts that are on the property. The development of the site would be near the top of a hill. It's right near the driveway that is used for maintenance of the golf course that has the best site distance on Coscap Road. So the sighting of the facility were to make use of the driveway of the Coscap Road, which is the best site for safety. And also, uniquely positioned, so that there's a golf hole that runs this way, and there's a golf hole that runs this way, and there's a golf hole that runs this way. It would play in the home position where we did not have to alter the golf course and the hole would be open, although one hole would be short.
And just before we then turn to that, you just made plan, the area that you just described as the, the area that was identified generally for the development, is that, there's a sort of large circle right in the area that you were just talking about, is that generally the area?
Yeah, it's just to the right of that. That circle is actually an isolation distance, well, in there. But it is directly next to where the site is developed.
Okay, just to help the board orient, as you go to the next slide, and if you could, then.
I remember for one moment, Nicholas, I was not ready, fast enough access, it was from what road?
Coscap Road, Coscap Road. Now, if I was to look at the sheet page number of that. So the site, the conditional use site plan is like CD one on the bottom, right-hand corner. It's third sheet of the set.
And again, that was included in the submission set, which the board has a copy of at A nine, is that right? Now, under section twenty-seven dash zero nine of the ordinance, there are certain bulk and dimensional criteria that would be applicable to any use which is within the R one interest. Did you review those requirements when you prepared the plan?
Oh, yes, I did.
And those requirements are different depending on the type of sewage and water that we're anticipating to be supplied in. What is expected to inherit with sewage and water?
On-site water and on-site sewage.
And will those require outside approvals beyond this board and outside of the initial use process?
Yes, cash officials and DEP.
So, understanding that you're then anticipating on lot water and sewer, if you could go through the bulk and dimensional requirements for for that type of development, based on what's being proposed here. So first, what is the minimum required lot width, and do we need it?
A minimum fifty feet. We do need it. The, the actual width is like two thousand feet because it runs along Coscap Road.
And what is the minimum required lot depth, and do we need it?
Minimum required lot depth is two hundred feet, and we're more like nine hundred feet right across where the proposed building is.
And same question with respect to the front yard setback, what is it and what do we propose?
Expert. What my basement is going to look like when my first floor comes down the hill.
Let's just do that on one more time, because I think there was some background.
The front yard setback requires thirty-five feet, and it's one hundred ninety-six feet to the building.
And same question with respect to the side yard setbacks, what are required and what is proposed?
Side yard setback is thirty feet, and we have two hundred and forty feet, and that's measured from this one up towards the property line with Cherry Valley Road.
And the rear yard setback, what's required and what are we providing?
Rear yard setback is twenty-five feet, and we're providing five hundred and forty feet.
Maximum building coverage, what's the maximum that is permitted and what are we proposing?
Twenty-five percent, and we're proposing five point one percent.
That's, did you get that one backwards with the maximum, with the impermeable?
Oops. The, the max.
I just want to make sure we're doing the, there's two of them, so.
Okay, the impermeable coverage, did you ask?
I, building coverage, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Building coverage, twenty percent, and we're proposing zero point seven six percent.
And then, just to clarify that for the board, the maximum impermeable, was that again?
Yes. The maximum impermeable coverage is twenty-five percent, and we're proposing five point one percent.
And then the building height, what is maximum permitted and what do we need that?
Thirty-five feet, and the architectural drawings that we submitted showed a maximum thirty-five feet at the very front where there's a peak. But the two sides of the building are, are lower than that with the same grade elevation, so it would be less than thirty-five feet.
Now.
You take the average grades around it, and then it, the root elevation, so it would be less than thirty-five.
So, so when you for this redevelopment, when you finalize all of those grades, and you know, you can then calculate the average grade, you're comfortable that that thirty-five feet will be the maximum?
Correct.
Now, in addition to those bulk and dimensional requirements that apply to any use, there are three specific criteria that relate to the conditional use itself for residential drug and alcohol treatment facility. Those are under twenty-seven dash five eleven, three point six. First, is there a minimum lot size that is different than the general lot size for all uses, and if so, what is it?
The minimum we need is twenty-five acres. The property is thirty-one and a half acres, but
Well, you're at the position.
Of twenty-eight point seven acres. And the difference of, should I explain the difference? Back with this map.
The things on this record say we're back on EF dash one, which is the condition plan.
That is correct. So in figuring out the net acreage, instead of the total acreage, it's on a D. The road right of way is less than fifty feet, so this project, when it goes land development, will require reservation of additional right of way. So I took that area, that additional area of road right of way, whether it's required or not, minus that out. I took the wetland areas out in case they're considered a permanent drainage usement. I took the area of Cherry Creek out in case that's considered a permanent drainage usement. And I also removed a flood plain from the area in case that's considered permanent, permanent drainage usement. So the ordinance definition requires the removal of those two things, the road and permanent drainage.
Okay, so taking that, then, that conservative approach, and assuming we would have to provide the maximum let it be, and all of those features that you just described could be considered permanent drainage usement, that's where you get to that net, and, and what did you say again, the total net acreage is?
Twenty-eight point seven.
Okay, so still above the twenty-five acres.
That's right.
Twenty-seven dash five eleven also provides that all treatment must be rendered on-site, and I would just note pretty clearly that that was in Mr. Harvey's testimony last month, that all of the treatment here would be on-site. And then, finally, Chuck, with respect to the.
Counsel, it looks like, looks like all the treatment, we're talking about patient treatment as opposed to water or sewage treatment?
Patient treatment. The ordinance requires that all, just that all treatment must be rendered on-site, but we're presuming that means the patient treatment.
Okay.
And that was included in the notice on the flight that we prepared, which we would give to us.
Right, yeah, okay.
And then finally, Chuck, section twenty-seven five eleven requires that a facility of this sort, they have a maximum of sixty persons in treatment. And again, Mr. Harvey didn't confirm at the hearing last month, that it can be a maximum of sixty people. And were you also provided with plans through the applicant that confirm as well a maximum of sixty persons in treatment?
Yes.
What plans were those?
Architectural plans were, sure. Architectural plans were prepared by Dan Sporay, the design and graphic. They have, this is the second floor plan. On the floor plans designate where those are.
I'd like to just note that for the record, that's plan SD dash two.
Right, and also, a plan SD that one, which contains the first floor plan. And that also has the front elevation rendering that are referred to showing the maximum thirty-five feet. What you can see here is the roof lines are less than that thirty-five feet on the sides. It was only the peak at the very front, so the average will be much less.
And just for purposes of the record, those plans were included in the premarked exhibit packets at applicants ten. And Chuck, were those included in the application submissions you had, Jim?
Yes.
Now, did you base your site plan and your parking requirements on that sixty percent maximum? Can you just discuss generally the, how the parking requirements work out of the ordinance, and what you determine with respect to parking need?
Parking requirement is based on the square footage of the facility, so we just simply took the square footage of the facility. It worked out to be fifty-nine parking spaces were required. We prepared a site plan, there's sixty on it, just to show that, you know, we have at least that many, we can pull one off. If you take a look at the site and the way there's open space all around and then golf course, if for some reason additional parking was needed, we could make that, that site larger. But all the parking was put right in front of the facility. Includes the required A P A parking, it has circulation.
And are those tiny faces size for, for ordinance requirements?
Yes.
Did you also consider loading requirements under ordinance, and whether there is sufficient loading on-site?
We did. And the required loading area, we put off to the side, there's a, a maintenance part of the building on the first floor. So the loading area was all be through there. It's also kind of tucked away. Coscap Road is here, so your, your visual takes the loading, puts it out of sight. Besides the minimum loading area, we enlarged that area just in case. We don't expect any for the servicing of the facility, which we buy box drop trucks. But we took a tractor trailer and rode it through the site, just in case one came in or one was ever needed. It's not planned for, but there's always a possibility, so we want to make sure the circulation around the site could accommodate it and at least get it back out.
Okay, and you can, can the, the loading area, whether it's the typical box truck that you mentioned, or a larger truck on occasion, can that loading area accommodate that truck without the truck including the rest of the parking and circulation site?
This is, this is a long area here along the whole side of the building. It's completely separate from, you know, the parking area, so we not stick out anyways.
Now, additionally, there's a, a traffic study or traffic assessment requirement under the ordinance, uh, that's, I would call it sort of a two-step process. And in the, um, in the zoning ordinance, there's a requirement for an initial assessment of, of traffic, um, trip generation to be performed, which is used to determine whether a more, uh, robust traffic study is required. Uh, did your office prepare that initial traffic, uh, assessment?
Yeah, my traffic engineer prepared it for us.
And was that included as part of the initial application?
Yes, it was.
And did you receive, uh, comments from the town to the engineer that you responded to as part of the, the recent mission?
The comment letter acknowledged, uh, that that was included, uh, in there and there were no, no comments after it not being, uh, accepted.
Okay, and understanding that you did not prepare, um, that traffic assessment, um, but that you had, uh, one of your, uh, traffic engineers in the office do it. Did you review that assessment as part of the, this initial submission or then re-submission?
Yes, I did.
And can you speak to generally to what, um, what that assessment provides?
Um, there's a, a couple of different ways based on employees beds or but. Uh, we use the, the, uh, employee one was the, uh, the most conservative in that it had the highest, uh, triple mount. And, uh, so that one was, uh, the one we used and put on the, the plan as far as, uh, the anticipated generation. And that was at two hundred and sixty-four, because the two hundred and sixty-four didn't meet the, uh, traffic study threshold with the hatch ordinance, uh, we deemed that was adequate, you had a traffic study, wasn't on either.
Okay, and what is that trip threshold to require?
Five hundred.
Five hundred, okay. Uh, now, and again, as I said, this is sort of a two-step process, so. Irrespective of the determination as part of the conditional use, that additional, uh, analysis will not be required, were this to proceed to a land development, would there at that point be a more, um, robust or, um, a fuller traffic impact assessment, um, at that time?
Uh, it's the same ordinance, so there wouldn't be any difference in what we're doing now than that.
Okay, so the, uh, the assessment in terms of what's been, um, submitted and, and at least initially reviewed, um, by the town to the engineers would be, would be done during the development and whether any other improvements are required in that way. Uh, now, there are some additional, uh, considerations that the board is asked to make for many conditional use under, uh, section twenty-seven dash seven oh five one B. Um, now, again, as we had certainly outlined for the board, uh, last month, although those are not, uh, the applicant's burden, uh, there were a couple of, uh, specific considerations the board had asked to make that did have, um, some, um, quantifiable, I'll call them, uh, standards under ordinance, particularly with respect to landscaping and lighting and assets, did you include, uh, in your plan sets, a landscaping and lighting plan?
Yes, we did, with your team. The sheet of the set called the landscape plan and the bottom right designation was LL one.
I haven't.
Want me to just explain it briefly? There's an existing tree line, uh, that's a long top gap road, that would not be, uh, changed. Uh, what would be added is around the tension basin, uh, once you get into the, uh, you know, land development plan and S Aldo regulations, uh, there would be landscaping required around the basin. Uh, where there weren't trees along top gap road, we were showing proposed trees to meet the landscaping requirements. Uh, there's also some required around a, a parking area and a dumpster area. So, yeah, the landscaping plan was, uh, prepared, uh, even though it would be completely, uh, reviewed again per the S Aldo requirement, but we wanted to, you know, show that it's feasible to do everything and meet all the requirements. And then the other plan was, and six plans were listed. Designated lighting plan, LL two in the bottom right-hand corner. And what that does is show that the entire parking lot and the access area has spot elevation on it in full locations, again, to meet the, uh, the township ordinance requirement, but will be further reviewed, uh, possibly refined, uh, during the land development stage.
Um, and then finally Chuck, with respect to, um, the, uh, the recent mission, and I believe you alluded to it earlier, that you did then receive an additional, uh, or a follow-up review letter from the town to the engineer. Uh, we've marked that at applicant's eleven, the October tenth, two thousand twenty-three, LBL application review number two. Um, can you just provide the board with an overview of, um, the, uh, whether there's any comments or any open items within that letter that have not, it was all aware.
There were only a couple of, uh, minor items. Uh, I think one of them was centered around where, uh, we show acreage to in, include it in another place, uh, which they are on the plan, but we just add them again in, uh, areas that make sense. We, you know, we are agreeable to doing that, but it's, it's a minor item. There's not anything insufficient about the number that are already there, just that they should be placed in another place that would make sense to go where that column is. There was another thing I believe on slopes, uh, slope data, uh, and percentage, uh, and a tabulation. Uh, the information, uh, is a little bit hidden, so clarified and drawn out. And the other one, I, I think, but also so, uh, the light. Besides just the lighting, the landscaping plan, everything that's done here is going to be subject to land development plan review. So they were commenting that, you know, their review doesn't take into account those things, those would be done at later time.
Thank you. Now, in addition to the, um, objective criteria of the ordinance, there are some additional subjective criteria that the board is asked to consider. Um, and again, uh, noting that it's not, while it's not our obligation to, you know, bring forth evidence, um, with respect to those subjective criteria, to the extent that you can, um, render an engineering opinion, uh, with respect to what goes, uh, I, I think it would be helpful based on the plans that you provided and the information that you, uh, garnered. So in your opinion, and again, this is from an engineering perspective, uh, would this proposed use have a detrimental impact on adjacent traffic?
I don't think the way the site is that, uh. It's really strategically located, uh, there's existing trees on the road with a supplement where there aren't. There's already a, a driveway there, but this is set back far enough on a large tract of land. It's not right next to anything, there's natural, uh, slope, uh, barriers. Um, it's, it's a unique location and the beauty of it as it exists now is really reflected in, in the use and the peace and harmony that we want to have inside as well. So it's being removed on a very large piece of property and keeping all the open stuff of the golf course functional really, uh, supplements it and, uh, doesn't, doesn't fight with it.
Well, it is a very large piece of land. Um, this is the first time I realized that the golf course was going to continue to function. Uh, I thought the golf course would be closed since this is very private. And, um, my question really is this, we're always trying to preserve as much of a buffer as possible between neighbors and, um, a new facility like this. And if you look at the, um, the, probably to Google map of this, it seems like the other end of, of this property, uh, is much less inhabited by other houses and so forth than, than the area where you are. I'm just wondering if, um, if there's a real, uh, reason from an engineering point of view where, um, this is a site where the, let's say, moving the site farther in the year map down the property and, um, uh, having more of a buffer, because, uh, I don't know, i- is the golf course going to be a public golf course, what's this? I don't, I thought the golf course was going to be closed completely because of this, uh, this use.
I, I've been told to avoid, uh, this disturbance of the golf course as much as possible, that this tape be moved up onto the other side of, uh, where the, the basin is, that this would remain, we cited the building, the middle one hundred and fifty square foot that's recommended for, uh, golf use.
Well, let's say from an engineering and a, a site plan point of view, is there any, uh, reason why this whole facility could be moved, um, more towards the center of the property rather than one edge, which is what it looks like from here? And it would, it would mean closing the golf course, but, um, I, I never knew the golf course was going to be open in the first place.
Well, the physical constraints are long.
Not, not, yeah, they're both in the middle, the ordinance ponds are around in there.
The question is from an engineering point of view, is there any?
Well.
One of the things is citing it there.
The most practically where we did sewage system, the sewage system is, is right there. That's the flattest, uh, best area for the sewage system.
Well, it seems like if, if the perks, perk hole were there, did the building be closer to them?
The building is.
Well, the building's anyway up there.
And you mean right, minimum isolation distances, um?
You don't have to answer that question now, I'm just asking because I'm, I'm curious to what the reason was for the sighting. I didn't know it had anything to do with golf course because it.
Well, the existing access point, the grade is very level where the building is, uh.
Although we can go top, you know, below this, there's a town to road, um, the building is, are, are reasonable. We can prove a, a top anywhere on there for an interest.
Well, we can discuss it, but again, there's steep slopes all along the side of, uh, top scap road. There's been a lot of, uh, I, I know the error.
All right, just, uh, well.
There was a lot of things that went into the, the site of the building, where the stormwater is going, where the water is going, and other things. So it was talked about a little bit, I mean, so much, there's a couple of, you know, trees out there that can stay. Uh, so the driveway is specifically graded, uh, not dedicated to the roof system.
I know it's not.
Any crossfire?
Sorry, Charlie, I apologize.
Uh, that's okay. And if we, uh, did, uh, people, uh, party status last time, I don't remember.
There were a couple others and Chuck did that, if you could give me one, just wanted to clarify.
Would you go on to yourself then?
Oh, that, we certainly can, I think, probably the idea as well. So sorry, maybe one more second.
I mean, I don't, I don't, Charlie's going to do it.
That's fine, I think you can, at least, at least, um, because I think there were some votes that will admit them since they were out there tonight. So let's just explain clearly that those are, so I, I.
The reason I'm saying this is, because I worked with the person that did this was, again, Dan's Berry Design and Drafting, and he explained to me how he did it. So the question comes up, I don't know that Charlie knows how he did it, uh, so.
So, so let's just mark that one for the record, then that is, again, is included in the board's exhibit package at A twelve, Dan's Berry, Dan's Berry Design and Drafting Viewshed Rendering. And if you could just, because I think you're right, I think that would be helpful. If you can sort of explain what these are and, um, based on your company with them, how they generate it. And Charlie can certainly be kind of the impact, uh, if this, during the test.
Yeah, we went to the table, looked at a couple of the, uh, the views from off the property, uh, as well as, you know, uh, a rendering of the, the coloring and the appearance of the building, you know, overall, which was the, uh, the idea of the first one, also what the, uh, the rear of the building, uh, would look like. But then we, we have a, a diagram that shows some, some different views of, uh, where, what this site would look like, uh, and what the, uh, architect did in preparing this was, he went out in the field and actually took, took a photo, uh, and then he took the, the building and superimposed where it would be on the plan in that photo. Uh, so the, uh, the top right one is, uh, the view directly, uh, from across top gap road. Um, it would, uh, be near the, just up from the driveway. And I think they took it where the existing house is, uh, directly up towards the site. And then because there's a wooded area on our side of the road, it kind of, you can see where the, the building sticks out right there, then they took a site view that was more down, uh, towards the corners of, uh, as you, top gap road, as you're approaching, uh, Cherry Valley from this direction. Uh, and that's that one there. Then the, the final one they took was if you went straight back from the, uh, the back of the building and go down the slope across the golf course, and then there was a woods line there, uh, what that would give the building upon, upon that. So the, the way he did it was, he took a photo and then superimposed the building in. But Charlie can maybe explain better the values and everything, I just wanted to. I worked with the architect to get that to Charlie.
Perfect, thank you. Now I really.
All right, and I'm just looking at my notes here and I see that we have a Diana Shai and a Charles Cogan as parties to this, so they'll be able to also ask questions, but we'll go to council first in the hopes that council will be able to cover all of the questioning so that there will not be as much by that.
And, uh, sorry Charlie, I, I know you know me, so I feel bad to have that crossing, but I will ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay. Could you please page your full name for the record, please?
Uh, for the record, my name is Jason Albrecht, L R I C H. I'm attorney with Rose McGinnley, downtown, thirty-three South Seven Street, Allentown, PA one eight. So, let's start with the traffic impact study, I, I want to go back to a couple of questions about that.
Okay.
Um, you did not prepare it, correct? So you may not be able to answer some of these questions, but I, I still would like to go a little further on this.
Sure.
Did you contemplate the usage of the golf courses in that operation of vehicle or traffic on an inactive property?
There would be no vehicle traffic from the golf course using this driveway.
So, but you're not, like, what about people accidentally turning in off there, adding in additional traffic, you know, mistakes such as something like that, golf carts, anything like that going on? So is this going to be, uh, somehow turned off from the golf course?
Uh, there will be a court path crossing of the driveway.
So what would happen if, if somebody accidentally turned into this? Are there going to be additional, you know, vehicles that you should pump?
I don't think the IP manual takes into account golf course.
What about, uh, emergency vehicles, have you contemplated those?
They would have the same, uh, access, uh, circulation, uh, paired up. What do you mean from like a traffic count?
Yes, for traffic count.
Pretty sure the IP manual, when they come up with these trip generations, they take all that into account. Like the number of two forty-six isn't what they expect to be used every day by the employees or the other number of, you know, by that square footage, which is variable from project to project, but it's.
But for example, in a, in a project like this, where there's going to be somewhat intensive treatment with somewhat possibly difficult patients, uh, there could be increased traffic, has that been contemplated?
When you talk about emergency vehicle, you're talking about like one vehicle might be there in a day. So whether it's two forty-six, two forty-seven, or two forty-five. So whether it's two forty-six, two forty-seven, or two forty-five. The I T manual takes all kinds of different studies and there's. I I have a copy of, you know, what what they use. But they take these iterations and then they come up with an average line. And uh there are these specific examples. Now, these specific examples, someone did a track account. And if they had an emergency vehicle, if they had a golf cart, uh however they did it, that would be taken into account of them. But in that individual study, there's higher and lower ones, but they have a a line that comes on an average.
Well, I understand it's an average. What what I was saying, I was asking if those were contemplated because of the the rather unique nature of what is being proposed here. One, the the somewhat intensive treatment with potentially difficult patients that could require additional services. Or, you know, the additional burdens of it being a public golf course. And do you know, I just wanted to.
Pardon me, but I can go away.
Uh I'll simply remove that word from that now.
I don't think it applies, but I'll watch my traffic and figure out.
Okay.
Uh just and then just some actual clarification questions. Uh on the application, acreage is listed as thirty-three point seven four acre. You said earlier is thirty-one point five. Is that correct? I just want to know which one it it makes.
There's a tax map record and there's a deed record. We use the deed.
Okay.
What were those numbers again, turning the page?
Uh the acreage on the application is thirty-three point seventy-four acres. The application and uh the testimony was thirty-one point five from Charlie.
And and Mr. Nichols, you're saying the thirty-one point five is in the deed?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, this is from all my surveyors gave me when they looked at the deed and they did their net.
I I just I bet this is strictly clarifications because it was different on the application. And what was the square footage of the building? Do you know that? Because the application indicates nineteen thousand, but I don't know if that is actually correct.
I get nineteen thousand and I round it off on nine thousand four hundred and seventy-seven square foot times two.
Okay.
Nine thousand four hundred and seventy-seven square foot is what ours. Will be a little less than the nineteen thousand.
Okay, but again, simple clarification question. And one final thing, you said that you believed uh in your engineering opinion that, well, I actually have two things. Uh in your engineering opinion that this complies with all the zoning ordinances that uh that this would mean a conditional use, correct?
Yes, okay.
Uh if the ordinance was deemed invalid, would that opinion possibly change?
Exactly.
I think he's asking a hypothetical that if the ordinance would be improper, would his opinion change? So he probably asked that in in that hypothetical fashion. If you know.
Something would change. You don't know. Okay. And then lastly. Supervisor Lotham raised an interesting question. Were you directed, I were you directed by your client to place the. To place the building in within the confines of this plan? Were you restructured to place that solely reserved the golf course?
That was one of the considerations that.
Okay.
The driveway location was another consideration. The uh site distance, the general flatness of the area. Um the availability of the one of the largest areas of uh the flat land that could be uh tested for uh sewage disposal.
Okay. And were there other, are there other potential sites that might be better, or is this in your engineering opinion the only site, or are there other ones?
I I don't know. I mean, this area possibly be tested for sewage.
I'd like to reflect that Mr. Nicholas said is him circling around a pond area on the pond.
It would be on the west side. But it's a much smaller area on the west side. As you can see, this whole area, whole area. Is tested for eight thousand plus gallons per day. That was uh. Being considered for uh what this would mean. And we use that entire area. Because it's not only the system, it's also a reserve area. So I already have been tested. And I understand that I'll go through plans for planning. Should this go forward? Understand. That's all I have.
Before we do uh redirect it through the group, let's see if uh Ms. Shai is here. She's got it. She is not. All right, then how about?
She is on Zoom.
Oh, she's on Zoom. All right, well then, Ms. Shai, you can hear me on Zoom. Do you have any questions of Mr. Nicholas? All right, we'll come back to you, Diane. Uh sorry.
I certainly have questions. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh the Dan's Berry design shows beautiful pictures of a blue sky. But when you're standing at the property, looking up over that mountain. It's not a flatland at all. They perceived it to be a very level area. But from my backyard, which I am at the bottom of the hill. I cannot see a blue sky up until the top. They're portraying it to be a different property. And I've asked asked the Smithfield Township supervisors to come out previously to see the property that we're working with and that they're talking about. Uh that was the first issue because those pictures do not show the real property that we're talking about at all.
Ma'am, I don't mean to interrupt, but you need to ask questions. It's not a time to make a speech or to present your side of the case. Do you have any questions for Mr. Nicholas based upon his testimony here this evening?
Okay, the lighting situation at night for security obviously will light up my back entire back porch of my backyard.
If you're making a statement, do you have a question of Mr. Nicholas based upon his testimony? You will certainly have a time to present your case and what you believe are things that are not good about this project and how will affect you right now.
Okay, so my question is, what will the back nine of that golf course look like? I'd like to know exactly what the fairways and what the holes would look like. I'd be curious to see how they're going to put a back nine on that part of the mountain, which it is. Is that a question?
Yeah, that is a question. Whether it's relevant or not is another story, but it is a question.
It is proposing not to change any part of the golf layout the way it is now. But the hole that runs up along Pots Gap Road, that hole would be shortened. Because the T presently goes across that driveway that we're proposing to access. So. We don't want golfers heading over cars coming through. And the uh only place above the stormwater basin is on the other side of that. So the only place to put a golf tee would be south of the drainage basins. And that would make that the hole a lot shorter. Might make it from a par four to a par break.
So you're saying. I'm sorry, but you're saying the former fifth fairway would no longer be the fifth fairway across my property line. What would that now be?
I am gonna, I was okay.
I'm not sure.
I was checking out the relevance. I'm not sure that.
Well, the only change to the golf course will be where our proposed driveway is on Tots Gap Road. Is that what you're asking about?
Really, well, I'm inquisitive to know what exactly uh they think they're going to do as far as the golf course behind us. And how it's going to interplay with this wellness facility that you're proposing.
That's a fair question because she asked how it interplays with the facility. If you were just asking what happened with the back nine, that would be irrelevant.
My understanding is there are no changes to the golf course other than where our driveway is. Instead of that being part of the fairway. The hole will be shortened and the tee to that hole where our driveway is going will now be further south. And that hole will be shortened. We'll have the same tee, uh the new tee and the same green. All the other holes around that whole property are proposed to remain the same.
So they will be open for business, correct?
That's I'm gonna, hold on, I'm gonna.
I don't know.
The there was testimony last month about that from Mr. Harvey. Um because he had a little more um direct knowledge of that. If you'll recall, there was um I think some simple testimony from him. And there's a um a couple of exhibits at A five of our packet that talk about that golf course. And specifically the executive nature of that golf course. This is no longer a public course. It has not been a public course for a very long time. Not intended to be a public course going forward. Um that was Mr. Harvey's understanding and testimony last time, and I think that's shown in A five as well.
And and if your witness didn't say, I don't know, I was defending your objection, but he answered it. Let's move on.
Any other questions, Mrs. Or I'm sorry, Ms. Shai?
No.
Thank you. Just for your information, I did come up to the golf course. I did walk around here. So at least one of the supervisors did look at the property.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cohen. Questions based upon the testimony you heard today?
Sure, I have a few. Um regarding the uh lights that are stationed around the parking lot, any idea how tall they'll be?
They're they'll meet the township ordinance requirement, which I believe is twenty feet, but I didn't do the lighting plan. So we will meet the township ordinance requirements through the land development process. So even though we're showing what we think meets the ordinance requirement, it's going to be reviewed again.
Any idea how many number of lights will be twenty feet tall behind the building?
Behind the building?
Yeah, there's a parking lot.
Horse, Pots Gap, Bell Road. I believe there are two holes there and two holes there.
And these lights will be on all night long, correct?
If you know.
I don't know.
Um how many lights, do you have any idea are going to be in the uh back of the property of?
There there are no site lights. I don't know about building.
Okay. Second question is regarding this runoff here. I I see on the um on the plan here that they estimate anticipated for eight thousand one hundred um gallons per day. G P D, that's correct, gallons per day?
I'm not sure where you're referring.
Cemetery, sewage treatment and disposal.
Oh, okay, for sewage, yes. Uh stormwater sewage, okay, yes.
So that does that roughly uh imply that somewhere between eighty-nine thousand gallons of water is going to be pumped to this facility on a daily basis?
Yes.
Okay, uh it says here on the, sir, can you help this photographer and the rest of us? And what are you looking at? Can you identify what you're looking at?
Map A one, map two.
Well, I'm just reading right off of the uh the the site plan here. I'm I'm reading off the site plan. Project narrative for healthy maintenance treatments.
That answers your question. It'd be the project narrative. Thank you, sir.
Okay, the project narrative. The private narrative says that the runoff is going to be directed northeast. Can you just can you show me exactly where this is going to be?
So we're not talking about sewage now. We're talking about stormwater runoff.
Um it in in both instances, I agree.
Northeast goes this way.
Okay, all right. And how how far will that runoff go? What's with the thermal opponent of that runoff? Are you gonna possibly gonna go underneath the road with the runoff? Into into the river, or is the runoff gonna end somewhere short of the Pots Gap Road or somewhere short of Cherry Valley Road?
I'm gonna object because we're not we're not at the land development phase where the stormwater would be fully engineered at this point. Like to the to the fact, Charlie, do you have a general concept right now as to how?
We we have not finished the full drainage design. And what happened to off the site, we went through the feasibility for the basin that we showed. What the size would be, you know, to meet a Nifty's uh stormwater requirement. And one of the components of that is uh two-year uh storm volume must be stored on the site. So the only thing we did was we roughly placed where a stormwater basin might go without designing it. Check the volume that was in it and then look at that D E B criteria just for feasibility. We did not do a full design. That would be done during the land development process.
Okay, regarding E F one, which is the um is uh in section number five here. Are you aware of the fact that this project site is a special flood hazard area?
The special flood hazard area is along the cherry creek here. And along this boundary. Our site is, as everyone has mentioned, it's a double hill.
You're wrong.
Objection. And Charlie's heard.
This this is not a question in the plan.
Understood. You have to ask number five.
Where are you, where are you?
Are you aware that for the past ten years, there has been flooding continuously just along the houses that are out on um Cherry Valley Road there? As an engineer, were you aware?
We're showing flood plain along this property lot. However, there's a golf fairway here and then there's a hill. And where we're citing the building is up on the hill.
So I'm 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 assuming that you're not aware that every time it rains on course, that there is a flood that occurs. Between Diana's side house and my house. Were you aware of that?
Objection, that's irrelevant.
Is that irrelevant at all?
There's a flood plain.
Sir, keep answering before I get a chance to draw the objection.
If you know, you can answer the question. If not, we'll move on.
Yes, I know there's a flood plain there and flood plains typically flood. So if you're experiencing those conditions, yes, it's a mass flood plain. That's what happens in a flood plain. It floods out.
Okay. Um that's not reality, but uh we'll talk about that later.
Um that that's the same wasn't your question. It was the comment.
As far as traffic is concerned, were you aware that the uh that the Cherry Valley Road is also a state bicycle route?
I I am not aware of that. My traffic engineer took a look at it. The traffic I can't answer.
Did you factor any of that Cherry Valley bike route that's a state bike route into your plan?
I have not.
Okay.
Those are all the questions I have. All right, we'll go to the the board if you have any questions. And we'll go back to if there's any further uh review around. Uh just a quick question because I I was listening to the last session, but I wasn't sitting up here. Is it is it eighteen holes right now or nine holes right now?
It's it's less than eighteen.
It's less.
It's less than eighteen.
Seventeen and a half.
At least it's done. There there may be.
The back line of this side of Tots Gap.
The back end of this Toscap Road.
I remember the whole golf course, is it, it, I'm sorry, it, it used to be 18, I know. And then, you know, it's had all suspicious, I wasn't sure if it had been operating as an 18-hole golf course or as a nine-hole, it was done twice, I don't, I don't know. But the, yeah, I didn't pack it and said, talks about it becoming a nine-hole executive alcohol green golf course. So I wasn't sure. I mean, I can't tell from these pictures where the fairways were, where they are. It looks from the picture honestly at the building right in the center of what used to be a fairway, but I don't, I can't, I don't know that. So I was wondering if it's, if the goal is to keep nine holes and we've lost, but I don't know, but that's what I'm asking.
The only change to the golf course, the building was positioned right between a tee and a, an agreement. So those holes, the only thing impacted was where the driveway is, the tee can no longer be there. That tee is gonna go, move further to the south. And then the rest of the golf course.
And the green, is southwest of the building? Right there?
Green is over here.
Okay, I thought it was going this way, but that makes more sense. All right. And what, what, what's golf, so you know what that golf, show number that is right now?
The whole number I do, yeah.
I'm sorry, which, which hole, which hole that is?
Hole along Cherry Valley Road?
That one that he's talking about.
Four.
That's in the four?
It is four.
All right.
Yeah, that question was not directed to you, that's your problem.
Sorry.
Jim, hand it.
That's, that's good for now.
I'm not sure if this is the correct place, but it is my understanding that the applicant's exhibit list has not formally been introduced into the record. That was a conversation we had at the end of the last year, and I don't believe we can do that, or if that needs to happen later.
I'm not going to make anybody's case. If they want to introduce their exhibit, that's up to them to do that before the case passes.
Okay, well, so then for the sake of making sure we're clear to all parties, my records indicate that not only that exhibit was not entered into the record, but the registration of their tissues names by the vendors was also not officially entered. I'm sorry for not including that.
No, that's fine, I think, I mean, typically what we do is.
We usually make it end. I, and I, I apologize, and I believe that's what Mr. Carr is actually pointing out. Traditionally, the lenders, we tend to wait till they introduce things.
We'll, we'll reference them throughout, and then we'll move at the end, and if anybody has a objection, we'll do that.
It, it makes the hearing, it makes the hearing clearer, and it makes your photographer not hate us.
Okay, so we have had direct, and you've had cross by council, by parties, and now by the board. Do you have any redirect, council?
I do not have a redirect.
All right, so from my understanding, you're asking that the hearings be closed now, not closed, adjourned until you can't present your planner on another date, is that correct?
Correct, and if we could settle on a date certain, that would be ideal.
That's what I was gonna say, the board, you could do that so that we don't have to necessarily re-advertise. So again, it'd have to be.
Off the record.
Yeah, it would be off the record, I'm sorry. So again, we need to, have to have the hearing scheduled within 45 days unless council would agree to an extension, but I think we should be okay.
Our next two meetings are February 14th, February 28th.
February 14th, really?
Yeah.
Is that, is that a day?
Already is in our day.
We broke the record, my wife can't say this, and it's not, it's actually Wednesday, so we still have to repent anyway.
I do know for certain that he is available, February 14th. He's not available for your second date in February, so the 14th is available. Otherwise, you can speak to ours, we're gonna get Mr. Elders.
All right, okay, we're, or, you can still ask it, he'll be back. One will be the one in March.
No, I mean, the 14th is fine.
Be the third. If you find law wants to run out, so we'll hear that.
I've been saying, if you want something, you start like any night, or if you're gonna get home and see my wife on our, because we don't have to, I don't have to.
Well, then March 13th.
Well, do you want, do you want to, our normal meeting?
You haven't, never mind. Your solicitor's about to say you'd have to re-advertise it then.
Yeah, how long do I have to re-advertise? How was the start?
Well, we've produced, we felt that we, more than 30, that must have said. If we don't pay today.
Yeah.
When are we supposed to be, 14th and 21st?
14th and 28th in February, and it's March 13th and 27th.
Give me a moment here, we have 24, so we have seven days left in January. We have 29 days here in February. And we have March.
Yeah, I do get a birthday this year. I'm February 13th.
Counsel, I'm correct, you couldn't do the 28th anyway, right?
Yeah, Charlie's not available, our planner's not available on the 28th.
I was gonna say, because I, I actually already double booked that meeting. While my opinion does not matter, that actually would hurt. Yeah, I have, I have, I was only hearing one of my own zone reports, in fact, with the planning meeting, one of my just found, so. I'm already sending somebody somewhere else.
Well, the, the way I have it, if I did my math correctly, and maybe I'm incorrect here, I have March 9 as the 45 days from today.
I was more thinking if we must switch our 14th meeting to the 21st, but.
I would not be down on the 21st, so.
You know, about, about 3rd Wednesday, I'm in upper Mount Belville.
February 7th?
Is that one of your?
February 7th.
That's a Wednesday, it's the first, first Wednesday.
That a meeting for you?
No, I'm okay, first Wednesday, I'm okay.
So my, my only worry is that I did not check alternate dates with the planner. So I know he's good February 14th, and I know he's good your March date, which I believe is March 13th. I would hate to tell you, the 7th is fine for me, they tell you it's okay, and I will wait after we schedule.
We should do March 13th, if you have to give us an extension.
Which we, which we certainly.
Because again, I'm counting March 9 as a 45-day window from today.
If, if I'm the only one, then whatever, but.
No, I'm not, I'm leaving, my wife, I'm missed, yeah, so.
Okay, there's all the reasons to move to not. Now, we're gonna do the 13th.
We talked about the 14th meeting, well, move it here on Thursday.
That's fine, we will. Or the 7th, 65 and a half.
Take one for one second here, so we don't let you hear that. It gets it down here on here.
So we're doing a 13th?
Of March.
On March, or?
We expect.
Now, let's go back on the record for some council, we're, we're scheduling this meeting for March 13th, it's at 6:00 P.M. According to my calculations, that would be beyond a 25-day window for the next meeting. Are you willing to grant on the record an extension through that date of March 13th in order to hold the next year?
All right, no, I'll understand, well, to recess, this conditionally used to be into March 13th, even 6:00 P.M. Do I have to give a second? There, all in favor?
Jake, everybody, you still have your.
Maybe I'll be in no excuse. Yeah, so many, I don't really think that. I know, I've never been able to. He just wanted to reset something, they won't see.
7:06, so we're gonna continue on with the meeting. First order of the business is a consideration of the set agenda, which includes the ratification of the advertisement and finance director position, pointing out the rivers and traffic site plan, branch committee put the change order to a green light go, and accepting dismissal of watering up and collisions partners versus the give tangent and all. Do I hear a motion on it, and so if you. Do we hear a second?
No, second.
Out there. Any questions?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
The green light go, I saw the numbers, but that is across multiple.
U.S. values.
U.S. values, right?
Yes.
So we, you know, I'm just curious, as we're talking about, what our take on that is, Hattie Bell's at 600,000? I mean, I know that sort of town, this is just.
Well, paid for by the branch.
Oh, okay, this, okay.
Yes, it was originally canceled when the pandemic happened, and then it got back online and. We bettered it now.
And this is only approved in just the state, so I have to buy them off, basically, no.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Next week, we'll just step you right away acquisition for remounting around the bridge. Missy, I know John says that that was mostly on, on him, but I don't know if you all ready? Contest to this additional fund.
I just, he sent me these plans?
Yes.
So, well, knowing the, the specific details, we plan to be used for right-of-way acquisition. The yellow portion is your permanent easement, so that's some of that area that township would retain should you need to go in there and do any improvements. The green area is a temporary easement, and that may be for maybe construction access that would exceed what your permanent easement would.
No, the works are gonna have to eventually approve this and then see formal.
Yeah.
Okay. Before we can potentially have to take other action.
Right.
Okay. And I'm going to assume that this, sky's not beautiful, it's still snowy, stuff outside that. We didn't hear anything from CLP about the positive wellness.
I'm well aware of it.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, Mr. Chair. We have, do you get on board with this, or we're not, or what?
I can ask that question.
Yeah, that's fine, you can always talk about this the next year, it doesn't seem like it's an immediately pressing action, though. Howard, Michael, and maybe you guys want to add on.
No, we need to, this, this hasn't really accepted this.
Next is especially.
What is, I know the Green Mountain Drive there, what is this for? Right-of-way for what, right at the entrance?
We are re-reconstructing the.
The bridge?
Hundred and ten-year-old bridge there.
That bridge?
Yes.
And who is gonna do that? The township is gonna do the bridge?
Uh, it'll be treated out by contractor.
Okay, all right, so it doesn't affect anything else within that Green Mountain Drive, just right there at the entrance?
Correct.
It's great, but multiple, we're going to go.
Right, to have better access into there, is that what it is?
Correct, because that's, that's a current rate, emergency services and utility trucks will not be able to profit.
Right now, they can't?
Uh, they can now, we've seen possibility on that, but, but going forward, they won't be able to. So this timeline, however, I think the.
It worked for 110 years?
Postage, uh, when it, I think, is, it, it's supposed to be like 15 tons, but it's definitely like five, five of them.
Yeah, I don't know, I'll send you this.
Now, do you have to get like all the property owners in there to like agree to all this, or?
No.
Is this part of the township right-of-way?
Correct, uh, it's currently part of our right-of-way, but we also want to operate that for the bridge and the roadway there.
Right.
So this is probably their only.
Right, it's a hatchet road.
Right, it's their only irrationally vertical.
Yeah, yeah.
Around 29 families.
Yeah, but, nice.
Yeah, and it would be cool, I mean, these, your 10-year-old bridges are.
So now are you gonna come up with like a new design or something, does anybody get to vote on it, or? Who makes the decision, what does?
Well, I mean, it, it's essentially reconstruction of the existing, uh, bridge. The, the only change is generally at aesthetic, it preserves the character as much as possible.
Really a needle bridge.
Yeah, that, that's essentially the, the process to.
Trying to either replace it.
Allocate, I guess, repair. 450.
Repair, not replace?
Well, well, it, it's a substantial reconstruction, it's.
Plus, what I want to replace, repair.
Well, it's, it's not like building any, or anything bridge, but it is. It's, I, I would guess that.
Is there any plans?
The grant was 320,000, I think, so it's pretty.
Is there any plans?
I would have to, I don't think there's any elevations that we get like rendering, but we could, we could certainly get you a copy.
Yeah, I'd bring them, somebody who's.
The aerial kind of site.
It's supposed to look like it looks now, only, um, gavel over the way. It's one of the original bridges of the seven bridges.
Well, let's try and maintain it, or.
Yeah, and that is certainly the intention, and that's probably certainly granted, that, correct?
So you got 320, is that what you said?
Correct.
Wow, good.
That was impressive.
It is. And that's why we're talking about the foot off the bridge, for, uh, barriers imposed. The township's intention is to transfer that bridge over to a property owner. I don't know who to start with on this. John request this specifically, or?
Uh, so this is on the agenda because it was originally on, uh, last meeting's agenda, and the, the hearing for Ms. Civil did not appear.
Okay.
As a bit of a heads up for the board on where this is going. And, uh, assuming the federal government has issued additional standards relating to how we need to create barriers on bridges. As it stands right now, the small, uh, poles that are basically glued on to the pavement as well as regular barrels are no longer admissible, uh, so they need to be water barriers. Um, so we are at a point now where the township needs to either consider purchasing those water barriers to line both sides of that road, or we need to, um, work quickly with Missil to remove the bridge from the township's ownership, and I don't. I don't see any.
I mean, so there are kind of kids. Uh.
What can I ask, can I, what is a a water barrier, is that a barrel with water in it, like the orange ones?
Uh it's, yeah, and they're they're linear, they're um.
Probably linear now.
Rectangle, um and we fill them with water and they're very heavy.
And I I'm not familiar. What is there now?
Uh we have uh barrels and um those were needed um. Initially, what are they, what are they called when they're not water filled?
Just like.
It it's like a rectangular barrel at this point. Orange.
It's kind of a barrel.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm familiar with that, I the water barriers, yes, but.
Alright. So basically kind of empty water, yeah.
Yeah.
Or that's on a bridge that only goes to a big water to.
Two properties, but now the other property is owned by Missil, so. In hand, it'll be just as complicated to replace this bridge. Uh as the other.
We don't want the bridge.
We don't want it very good, the property owner wants the bridge.
And if we give up the bridge, then it doesn't have any federal requirements?
Uh I am not the first in that, I don't know where that goes, um but Missil has expressed interest in um. Having the township turn over the bridge and the road behind it, because she will be the sole property owner that gave access on that side. Um and she's interested in preparing the bridge and putting out the gate.
Correct, I already explained to to her council, you know, they have to file a petition. I know, to to basic road, different ways like.
But she's.
Well, we have the on that, so we will have to take action if. Uh but we can wait until our next meeting, this will address under. You have seen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Ruth. Michael. You expressed an interest in the formation of a simple township right now, we both know that two, at least two of our neighbors is how it happens.
Yeah, I just thought um. Uh. I'm I guess I was somewhat surprised you didn't have a down recall committee for town fifth, I do see them in other townships, I'm not. Um. Not, I'm actually not positive we we want, but I think I actually do think it'd be useful, like there's um. There's a lot of things that have been done, you know, in the past, we looked at that, how um zone. Um it probably normally would go through a committee for discussion and in some ways, I think there was sort of an ad hoc committee with the planning commission members and. I think it could make sense to have one that we could bring in outside sources to to enhance some expertise.
Or the Water Gank does fine, it does good work, it says, Mill Smithfield's.
I have. I used to sit on it in Mill Smithville for several years. So I get. Good work with it.
Okay.
Nothing was happening, and also. They had, and I I don't know if they replaced them, but they had a um a director of economic development. Did they replace her?
I don't think that's necessary.
To whom they were paying about fifty five thousand a year. Um and what her job was, and I really love Restaurant Week and also um. Um whatever, you know, the other thing.
I I think it's somewhat changed since then, I think. Maybe generally it's.
I'm not suggesting, I'm I'm not in my massive list of suggestions, I'm just thinking about. I've been used to unable us to bring in, just similar to the the. The park line allows to get some outside viewpoints on.
Well, I think it's not a bad idea, but it the question is what we do with it, another re-rject. Before both of your time, uh when I was running the web website here, I try every month to feature one of the businesses around here. You know, we take pictures of the restaurants, but um. It just never went anywhere because we don't have enough businesses, like Mill Smithville, there's a lot of retail business, you know. So it's really, I think it's a good idea, it's like. How do we direct it, and maybe we should just talk more when we have a chance about where we go with it. Um I'm all for it if we can get people on it.
Yeah.
But it's like, you know, it should have a mission rather than.
Well, so I think I think just the focus for it is that there are a lot of. Home-based businesses and other small businesses that aren't necessarily retail. Um you know, that our ordinances affect them too, but they're not necessarily, it's not that they're not considered, it's that this kind of gives them a special place to talk about this.
Yeah, I think maybe we get those kinds of people on the committees.
I mean, there's there's years ago, there was huge changes made um our ordinances and I think creating that economic development. Uh zone, um but. I I'm just in looking back, I mean, I was on the planning commission at that time, and it was planning commission member, too, I was talking about it. When we hired a, what's his name?
Tom.
Tom. Tom Hidda. Um but maybe we could have gotten some of that to free by having had a she, that's basically. I I'm not saying I'm gonna be making all those summer changes again, but.
But you know, I look, that's interesting, because I look forward to that and say. The planning commission took really lead on that.
Yeah.
And it's like, okay, what they did and what they could do, let's say if it was a committee, and I'm sure some of the planning commission people could be on it, if they wanted to, but. Maybe that's the direction for it.
I guess my also thought was in joining, uh I saw a lot of committees that I don't think do much of anything or. Hadn't been doing much, so I'm not trying to say I wanna create another community that does nothing. It was more that, well, we have all these communities that aren't. Yeah, I didn't necessarily understand what's so valuable, but we don't even have an economic development committee, so we don't have to talk about that, it just seems like.
Well, look, my advice is, let's figure out. A a real target motion for it, so at least we can say, okay, you're joining this because we're gonna do action.
I I think there's two that are directly adjacent, that you know, you can do that during the week before next.
Alright.
Meeting, if James, roughly, I can leave his email.
Okay.
He's the economic development manager, he he is just basically that committee and Mill Smithville Township and. Uh I do not know the. Who he is specifically from the other Water Gaps, but they have a really good one as well.
Okay.
Yeah, Jacob, I think Ty is on that.
Yeah.
I think she's on it, um.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, I will do more research. Okay, but I'm agreeing with you, it'd be, so if you can find, you know, to make some data.
I remarked here too much, if you guys weren't sort of on board with the idea, so.
No, that's terrific.
Okay.
And also, then you could be really good for some regional economic development planning. Um you know, obviously, we care about what others do, because it's near us.
Well, well, that's another thing, whether you do, you know, end the building, a ten year plan. Uh maybe the committee could push for joining with like. You would hear a river then another Tom committed plan for forty thousand.
No, that's actually.
Alright. So we'll talk about the the next meeting, now we're gonna talk about something else that's really fun. Schoolwork, that school bus that the Hollow Road. You both wanted to talk about this and then the following item too.
Um it might be people.
Right, I think we should talk about what we heard previously, yeah, 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 before we enter any of that, we're even kind of direction.
Yeah.
Why?
I wanna start.
Well, well, you start, Robert. No, I think let's talk first, because I collect some information as well.
What have you collected?
Well, I like, I mean, I just, I also received the same complaints from you. I did, I.
Not from me?
Not from you, sorry, from from members, oh, we were here, I did take it by myself to reach out to the school district. Um to just seek clarification and um. Was effectively told that it can be moved if there is a letter from the HOA requesting as such. Uh. And it seemed to be very clear from, I mean, I only got one email response, I got two email responses from the former uh board chair and then the director of transportation. Um that it was something that 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 community had to allow. That, well, so that's that's, I did get that information, then the other thing, I did reach out to president of the HOA. Had a conversation with him yesterday, um just because I had heard complaints from our performance room, uh wanted to understand um his view and. What I understood was there. There definitely are issues with the current place, my understanding is there are probably also issues with the last place, which was the parking lot, and that there was. Again, uh I I I sort of feel like, I'm not sure what our role is at all in this, but um. That there were safety concerns, the school district actually has safety concerns, there was the HOA ultimately that asked them to just move it out. Um I do understand that um. From him, he is open to moving it to another place, um for instance, top of on that Mount Nebo Road, I don't know if it's already. Okay, I'm just.
It's five point five miles.
Alright, ju- just to be clear, we don't actually have any authority on.
Yeah.
We're actually just being curried into our residents to try to address this, because we have a relationship with the school.
And then, now, yeah, I should start start that as well, I received all these things and in doing so, in my letter, my email to the school district saying. I don't know that this this Smithfield has any jurisdiction over this, and my response from the school district reiterated that I don't think we have any anything about that. I just also know the the president, so I look in and say, hey, dog, um you're, yes, and he knows, of course. And so I was even saying, I have no jurisdiction here, but I'm just trying to mediate a little bit, so I won't say that.
I need a pause for a moment, ma'am, may I have a minute please?
Jay. Remos.
Alright, I'm less, I think.
And so, I mean, I guess I'd say ultimately, I think it's it's something that the residents need to work out with the board of the HOA. And I don't know how that can be done, um. And I honestly, in this case, on a piece of the bus stop. Robert, I mean, we talked about the speed bumps is next, um I don't know where. The board. Of Smithfield Township has a right to sort of come in, because I do think the safety side is a little subjective. I mean, on the on the speed bumps, it's a little bit more clear, there's a code for it, what it should be.
Well, and also, our engineer did a study of it, which he stamped and submitted, which said basically they're unsafe.
That's the speed bumps, right?
But I I agree with you. And um. We don't have any right to tell that HOA where to put um a a school bus stop. We can say it's unsafe, or it is, but we can't say what to do with it. Um and it ties into the whole safety thing, because. Um it's it's part of it, and um my feeling strongly is that um. What we need to do is consider an ordinance that would give us um, let's say, the right to uh insist on safety. On any roads in the township that are open to the public. Um we already in December passed um a a um a a a. What do you call it? You know, you know, and we consented to um. Um taking um the HOA to judicial, 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 uh directed judicial review, am I right, Ron? I got that right?
Well, and basically the cleratory judgment also.
The clerary judgment, but Ron's advice was also, we should consider an amendment. Um which backs up what we would be doing in court, but more than that, I think what it does is. It lets us debate and define what exactly we want, because um. The amendment would define what we're what we're talking about and the the limits of it, uh and the definition of it.
Just just for clarity of discussion, are we talking about blending? Some alternative safety requirements into the road, like I I wanna separate the school bus.
Yeah. It's just two very different issues.
It's two areas.
They're two different issues.
So let's let's avoid, let's finish the bus out first.
Okay, well, I think there are people that wanna talk about the bus stop, let's.
Wanna go first?
Can I ask two clarifying questions to? The.
May I have your name, sir?
Yes, Derek, D E R E K.
Watch, you go forward, sure. All of you, we have one system.
Uh last name T E A Y. Yes, specifically the bus stop, um I just wanted to clarify, did the president specifically state that the board asked for the school bus stop to be moved? Um. I believe a letter was written requesting it to be moved, actually, I'm not sure, I don't really know what's happening. I do know that the school district started, they were requested to move it. Okay, which, but that would come at the behest of. The board. Yeah, probably, I believe it was also, my understanding was also came into play as a result of the school district visiting the previous site as well. I don't know if that's true or not, um that's what I was told. Okay, um I'll, and I also, my understanding also is there is a question of like, and this is what I keep hanging on, it's it's things to Ron to. In some ways, I, I mean, in some ways I don't care, I I care, obviously, I care, I have kids, you know, myself, um but. What happens? I'm I'm not sure that really matters, because you guys want it safe, moving forward, right? That, and that's what I said at the end too. Yeah.
Um the other question I had for you was, you indicated the school district said that they would be willing to look back if they got a letter indicating.
That's what it was I inferred from their email, and I actually responded. At seeking clarification on exactly that point, I did not receive response, but that is what I was inferred from what was said. That's that's what I was looking for clarification on, is if all they need is a letter, or if they're looking for um, you know, the um concessions from us on liability. I don't, I would like to try to understand exactly what's.
This name was that they are allowed to go into HOAs if they receive a letter from the HOA permitting them to go into the HOAs.
Okay. The reason I asked is just just for some context here, so I have some neighbors and friends that that are here from the same same area and. I also, to put it as you say, it's not that I don't care, but I don't have children, the bus stop will affect me, but. What's important to me is um I felt that homeowners and people in the community are not being heard. Uh which led to me kind of getting a little bit irritated about it and uh making making decisions to run for a board and for the board uh of our. Uh HOA and and getting a place on the board, so I directly from what I believe to be a safety issue. From where the bus stop is and and children that are uh, you know, potentially endangered from the the bus stop situation, I ran specifically just so that I could. Hope to bring the community's voice to the board so that we could could further uh improve this situation. So I don't have a horse in this race other than the community and and of course, uh the parents that are concerned about this and and the the children that are also in the the neighborhood, so. For me, that was what was important, I'm just. Hoping that the township has something they can do to, again, look at this from a safety perspective and and I don't know if there's something that can be helped or if it's. An ordinance that that passes on this, but it's a point of frustration for us, because the the, I'll say, the previous board prior to me being on it. Seemed to not be receptive to this, seemed to indicate that, you know, they weren't the ones that had fault, the school board was the ones that were at fault for all of this. So it's a lot of he said, she said, finger pointing, not getting a lot done, getting attorneys involved. It's it's just a lot and um, you know, that that's sort of where the concern comes from is, you know, if it's gonna just be finger pointing and. He said, she said, where does the township draw the line on, well, none of that matters, what matters is the safety of the community, the kids. And I think right now, in some ways, none of it matters, because right now, at least from the bus stop, my understanding is it's an internal issue that you guys have to. Figure out. It's me, right now, I mean, but the bus stop is on the township route, that's the part that that's a little bit um.
Except for the state road.
Oh, state road, okay, thanks for the correction, it's not on private road, I guess it should have said. Um so that was my kind of gripe with that, I don't know if anyone else had anything to like to say, but please.
Um just hold hold one second.
Yes.
Did you happen to, I mean, I I don't. Don't know that we have a formal place in this either, so I'm seriously gonna pen down Doug's, if you know it's a state road, have you contacted Penda or? Our state legislature, as we.
I have, I have not, I tried to, at least for me, I can't speak for anyone else, I tried to just start locally and.
Sure.
See where it had to go from, from there.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jay Remos, um I have four children, um three are with or in school, I have high school uh south. I have Queensdale and I have Smithfield. So I get to be at each bus stop every day. Since the beginning of the school year, I witnessed what takes place, the chaos, how. To be quite honest, I'm from the city. And I know the danger of children walking in between cars, the traffic, when people are in a rush in the morning to get in and out of the community. It becomes chaotic, with dense fog, weather condition, you cannot see some of these children. Most of the time, the children are waiting for the bus stop and the dog. So yes, it is on Hollow Road, but mind you, we have a very thin, narrow entry to come into our community, so now. Now also. Um I'm a parent that will wait there and I will try to make sure as many children can get to their cars or seem fit to get onto the side, so I'm standing in the middle of the road. Daily being a traffic agent, okay, which this is not, this is not my job. Um it's either that or it's gonna cause a serious accident, um because now we have parents on both sides waiting. Okay, and now we have people, you know. Residents trying to leave, come and go, which where where it was originally was in the overflow. And I would reach out to the school district the second day of school started, and I spoke with Mary Ann. Who has been with the school district for over twenty two years, and she had said this is the first time ever that a community has asked for the bus stop to be put. Outside the community, she said usually they wanted to be put in, they requested to be put in. So I said, I don't understand what's going on, is. So I said, I don't understand what's going on. Is there enough space? Yes, from time to time, we would have parents, I'm guilty, I will gladly admit it, that would pull on the side instead of in the overflow, because the bus has to bus make a whole U-turn. So when there's sixteen cars there, it does get a little tight for her. So there would be a couple of cars parked on the shoulder. Cars were able to come and go. You could get clear visual around you. Uh, so even if residents had to go to and from work in the morning, there was still an easy access. Now it's very congested. Um, I had reached out to the president on behalf of saying, you know, when I was cool, I I was told that you requested this. He got belligerent. He started cursing at me, screaming at me, this, that, and that. So I, I'm presently not gonna stand for that. I dismissed him and was gonna go move forward. I reached out to the school. They said there's nothing they can do because it came from the board. I reached out to the uh, Napa and Christina Seprico, who's supposed to be our property. I don't know, management, whatever she does, which she's limited to, I assume. She was, it fell on deaf ears. Um, it, now I spoke back to the school again, because I was adamant about this being dangerous with forehunter. And she said, if the school, if 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 the board makes, you know, an agreement that they want it to be placed back into the community, we'd be more than willing to come in. Now, we were told multiple things. At first, we were told, school buses are not allowed in our community, which I have pictures of multiple school buses driving around our community. So why is it that our bus is not allowed in, but other community buses are? So it's like a tit for tat. I feel we're all grown. I'm actually putting our children at risk because we're trying to be childish and cruel about them. I mean, I'm a parent, I have four children. It's like, I feel like we're playing, um, you know, you can't do this, but I did this, but I have power, you can't. It's very childish and maybe you should risk the children or somebody get into an accident. Because now it's gonna cause more animosity amongst people in our community. I mean, right now, there's animosity and people trying to get back and forth. So I mean, why? An accident waiting to happen, even the bus driver said it's dangerous. So, I mean.
Sorry, but just to provide a little bit of clarity, because I think you asked earlier, Shawnee Valley Drive is this road where everyone is parked on?
It's a turn.
So they're parked on both sides of this road.
I have.
It's a taller road.
If you want to even see the road.
The traffic is trying to drive down the middle of what is now basically a one-way road.
May I?
With children.
So now, this is, this is the same. And this is, this is yet. So it's very dangerous with snow and then you have um, children at the bus. I usually stand for another couple of parents that I am initially, three times a day. I can't lose. So at the point where I rather choose than to fight with somebody, deal with them, sometimes I'll drive. I'll be choose, you could get drove to school, we have the bus stop to you, I'll drive, you just not be there three times a day or six times a day. Um, so, you know, I don't know if anybody could shed some light. Just think about who's like, when it's dark, especially behind the light.
Aid of gathering and doing our best to to facilitate, you know, something, but like I said, it's informal since unfortunately, it's not within our jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, really quick, Jade, I have a quick clarification question for you.
Yes.
Um, you had mentioned that the old bus stop was an overflow.
Yes.
Forgive me, I'm unfamiliar with the area. Is that an overflow parking lot?
It's an overflow parking lot. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
I'm sure in the HOA.
In the HOA, okay. Wonderful, thank you.
You're, thank you.
My name is Joseph Pendalfo, P E O L F O. I'm the first resident of Shawnee Valley. I go back to the eighties, nineties, eighties, nineties. And I have two children, both way out of, at least not out of my house, but they're they're not in school. Um, when the school bus was first required to pick up my children, we picked them up on Hollow Road twice. And they said it wasn't gonna work. That was the school board saying it wasn't working. Because Hollow Road where we are and the road they're entering is actually an instruction road. It was never put there to be the main entrance. It became the main entrance when it was decided that Shawnee Valley Drive would not become a township road. It it physically was designed with blinds on both sides. You come down one side from here and you're in the bank of return. You come up and you're in the bank of return. So as far as the road itself, from a safety standpoint, is marginal. Okay, but we managed to survive survive with it for thirty-plus years. When they moved the school bus originally, they moved it onto Shawnee property and there was only two children in Shawnee property responding to that. As my children got older and more people came into development, the numbers escalated incredibly. And the decision was to move the bus into the overflow parking lot because it takes them out of home. Now, I fully understand, support, the township is not physically in the middle of this. Don't misunderstand where I'm coming from. I'm just trying to give you clarification of where and how this came to be, so that you understand that where those parents are requesting the bus to go to, it's been there for thirty years. And the only problem is, we had some parents that were too lazy to go into the overflow parking lot. So they went on the bottom road and one of them made this complaint. That's how they thought they were doing, and that has nothing to do with the catch on, anyway. All I'm trying to say to you, so you have clarity on what it is, is that the children, okay, all belong back in the overflow parking lot. It's not so you don't have about that. And the fact that two days ago, Monday or Tuesday, um, I was driven off the road, which kind of hurts you. Because one of the parents was down at the end of the road, waiting for her children for the bus to come. There there's no shoulders on that road now. So you have basically a lane and a half of paved surface. You put a car on the right, you put a car on the left, and once you plan on standing your car up and running it through on the side, it's a little tough to get out of. Now, that particular day, I'm a proud grandparent, and I was elected to take them to preschool. So I had to actually go physically out and put up with what the parents putting up with, but that's not one of the, I'm here, I can tell you a fact. We had it where it was. There's never been an accident. The school board never had a problem with it. We have a road that doesn't need any sandings for parking on the side. There's no shoulders. So on the sand, you can't leave Hollow Road or a safety of the power. I have all of that. I just want you to realize that when you're looking at what's happening here, understand you see a picture about that big and in life, we always only get that much in the picture. This is a much bigger issue. And the day someone comes along around Hollow Road and you don't know Hollow Road in the morning, the people driving on, they miss you all the time. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's quite much.
Trying to get to work.
They're gonna take, they're gonna take you to a parent or child. And then it's gonna be a major problem. That's all. And and just bring out some clarity of time.
Thank you very much.
There were.
Just wanting to watch them.
Well, I guess I'll just do first. I know there's so much in in your HOAs, Tracy, and I I feel bad for everyone involved and especially kids. Um, but also, I think you guys have to try to focus both sides on not what happens and why it left. And but like, what is the best option going forward? And I'm hearing from you that the best option is back to where it was.
Yeah, that's proven.
I'm standing there every day like I'm a crossing guard. That's why.
Um, I I've heard from the K T park supervisor saying they don't believe that is possible because of like you say, parents that don't care and they run around and so it's also a problem with other parents, there's third parties as well. Anyway, I'm just saying, I think you guys gotta get to a takeaway. I have to think you guys all want the same thing ultimately. In this case, I do think you want, it's just a question of how to get there.
Well.
But I don't know, I don't know what we can do besides that.
My feeling is, if it goes to the next legal, which is road safety, Sammy, uh, we can't do anything about moving the bus stop. Um, we can only do something about road safety and my feeling is, it's it's because of what what's on here, but it's much larger than just Shawnee Valley. Which is that um, we should have standards for um, what you can do with road safety. Um, it's very simple to say, uh, you must, if you make any improvements or um, modifications, that they must be up to Penda recommendations and that um, our engineer will be happy to look at them if you want. But that should be up to recommendations and um, it started with the speed bumps or whatever you wanna call them. And it's not just Shawnee Valley. There are two in Wyndham, um, that are also.
There are every one of these. There's North Slope, there are all of those.
Well, the ones of, where are you saying, North Slope, Route Three?
I think there's, isn't there a conference North Slope or two?
But there, there's not a North Slope Three, but there, there, that's the middle Smithfield part, so. Um, when I say Wyndham, I mean, uh, pretty soon, road, who drives, goes past the rack center. But uh, bringing that to their attention, they immediately said, you're right, we're gonna fix them. And they will in the spring, because they do have two newer houses that are uh, conforming with Penda um, regulations, something to order on the front page. Um, and this brings up, as I keep saying, the the other issue, nothing to do with speed bumps, which is, uh, I call Ashen Holly. Which is giving us some reason to be able to go into a private development, which is Lake Valhalla, and say, um, we must find a way to bring these roads up to safety standards. And with Ashen Holly, it's absurd that the sewer authority is gonna put central sewer in this year and mud roads where manhole covers are gonna stick up to the mud. I mean, this is, what have we, what have we got here? Sounds like, are we in the Ozarks or are we in uh, Smithfield Township? And there are ways that we could find um, the help of class or uh, you know, um, roads. It's expensive, but this has been a problem that's been tested since nineteen sixty-eight. And um, I think it's time we acted on it. Um, and it's, it seems that if we if we pass some simple amendment that's part of our our uh, our safety code, I'm talking about, I think, chapter ten, wherever safety is. Um, the the direction is, at least with the with either these speed bumps or with um, you know, mud roads and Lake Valhalla, we have some way of saying, uh, we have safety in this. We have, we, we have a way of 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 having jurisdiction. And it's not anything to do with, you can have your private road, it's to do with safety on roads, anything that's accessible to the public.
Yes, with Smithy, in other municipalities that that level uh, consults for, have you seen them address safety on HOA roads after the way it all been based?
Yes, not.
And neither has, I'm gonna think from P S on it.
Julie, have you asked, reached out to P S as well? Did you get a response?
Um.
Who talked the same way I talked the way.
I I actually reached out to Holly. Um, I did get an initial response from her. She was asking for clarification though. Um, so I sent that back out. I'm still pending for a response or not. I can say.
My big concern, Robert, is there are what, seventeen hundred second-class townships in the state of Pennsylvania? Um, and in every single one of those townships, no one is is taking on, trying to take on speed bumps in HOAs because there is legal precedent. I think we have the risk of hundreds to thousands of dollars of legal fees to ultimately fail.
Well, let me add like this before we hit that, because we had a case that maybe it's similar out the same. Ron, can you give a summation of the previous arbitration that was done with, I think it was Eagle Valley or something akin to that? I remember Carney Ferrari was in council for the opposing side. There was a dispute over the escrow funds remaining and the roads were unsafe there.
Right, it really did not deal with the issue of that that is being discussed this evening. It just really dealt with return of the unused portion of the letter of credit uh, and things to that effect. But I will say to the board, and I'll say this to the residents too, especially if there's some on the the board of the Shawnee Valley uh, property ownership association. It would be nice if someone could give me the declaration of covenants, restrictions, and conditions that apply to Shawnee on a state. You gave me the bylaws.
I need the separations too. Uh, and I gave you, but I I can find nothing.
Are they being controlled on? Because you go on the on the website and in, there's this amendment, and there's that amendment, there exists amendment. It's tough for me to try to figure out how to give advice if I don't know what the law works well.
I I think whatever you find, you find nothing about the roads.
I found very little on what you gave me, other than a a general flag rating safety.
But look, my concern is much more than those speed bumps. It's the whole idea of us protecting the public, whether they're a public or private road uh, in issues of safety. And we may be the first ones, but you know, somebody's gotta be first. And the question of liability, uh, I can't answer. You can answer, maybe. But we already passed a, you know, a uh, consideration to go to uh, for judicial review, direct, whatever you call it.
Right.
Um, and your advice is, was is uh, pass an amendment so that when we go to court, uh, we have that to stand on, as where where we're, where we're coming from. Um, but I think Michael's question about what's our liability is a good one. I mean, I I don't know, you know, and it's uh, it seems we could craft this in a way where we're not telling them that we're gonna do something. Um, we're saying, you should be subjected to the same standards as anyone else is saying. Whatever Penda's uh, uh, recommendations are, they should be there because that's considered safe.
I think that makes sense for construction of of a road, and I would therefore argue also for the renovation of a road, just like you need to get a building permit. Even in an HOA, you still need a building permit if you're gonna add a deck, because it has to meet the code, you're gonna be inspected. So in that sense, I think it makes um, sense. I don't know how that would address an unpaved road. If they don't wanna pave the road, they don't have to pave the road.
Well.
They're a road.
It's much more complicated.
I'm just, and I understand that safety is the theme. I have a, there's a right-way driveway, which is my property. You can't come and say you have to pay that.
Well, we're not telling them we have, they have to pay, but we're saying for safety reasons, it should be paid. Okay, that's all. How it gets paid is another issue, and we're actually quite involved in that, but I don't wanna get into that because it's a long subject. These this is, these are abuses that have gone back to nineteen sixty-eight.
I think there's a very clear, specific case on on what you're talking about, but I think generally speaking, you you need something more akin to like what you're saying with, you know, permitting process. We could amend our ordinance to say that, you know, new roads have to meet, you know, road standards or Penda standards, whichever.
Or be in any future PRBs, but I don't know, can you do it? Pass a year, it's probably not, because it's already in place.
But your analogy to um, construction um, permits, building permits is is exactly.
But that's what I wanted Julie to ask P S, because if there's not a single other case in the entire state of that happening, then I suspect I'm wrong. I mean, I'd like to be right on that, but.
And and remember, if we do this, it may be that the Shawnee Valley bumps are exposed to that though. I don't know, you know, there'd be four of this, but if you're if we're going to go for a direct judgment, it certainly makes sense to say, well, this is what we believe, even if we can't say that you must do this because of the down to court. What gases, am I right, but?
Well, yeah, again, remember, we we, you gave me the authority to file an action in declaratory judgment. That is an action which you tell the court, we don't know if we're right or wrong. You have to declare, hence declaratory judgment, as to whether or not we can do this or. So what we're talking about, whether or not we can do what? Con- control private roads in a PRD?
Safety on private roads.
Safe, control the safety.
So you're, okay.
And I think, you know, he says a copy of what he submitted.
I didn't submit.
Oh, you haven't submitted.
Oh, I haven't.
Oh, yeah, because my my advice was to do an ordinance first to give us at least uh, some basis to go into court, rather than just going in with uh, air and mic. Well, the issue that I.
Well, the issue that I used to reach is, there's generally only one way to enforce. Things like this, and it's, you know, it's to do it yourself and, you know, do a lean, that's how strata handles. Uh, you know, the, the lighting burnt down, and things like that, but I've never heard it done on this, and I, we don't have the money to.
We don't have the money. Yeah, it's true.
So that's what I'm saying, like, that's the only way I know enforcement to exist, cause instead you have to do this.
Then you have accountability too.
And then. What happens then?
Yeah, it, it, again, you're in a private development, so that.
So at some point, should we not have also the possession to flat out that declaratory judgment action?
Some point you should what?
Have an executive session to delineate exactly what we're asking.
Whatever you're willing to do, that's, you know, that, that is, that is your call, and getting back to the liability question. But there's always liability, people consider anybody for anybody, anything today, but. If you're basically going to court and saying, look, we don't know if we're right or wrong, tell us if this is right or wrong. I think your liability is very small in that case, cause you're not forcing something down your throat. You're basically saying, Judge, we're, maybe we're wrong, but tell us what, tell us what the deal is here. Uh, and, and I don't have a whole lot of background as per. Uh, supervisor, outbursts, requests about other. Townships doing this, whatever, as I said.
And I'm not even thinking about in terms of new ordinance, I'm thinking as it relates to current building ordinances, which is under what?
That's under the building code.
I mean, I know if you build a, I know if you build a bridge, you build a bridge, you need a permit to do it. You need a building permit, right?
That's because you're dealing with water situation.
Well, if you build a road, you're not need, uh, if you're building a brand-new road, you not need a building permit, or someone's got water, it's a whole different.
Okay, I know, well, well, it's just care about, care about, we talk about, it's simply the gateway all the time. All of their roads, I don't think they, I don't know if they had a specific permit to construct them, they just had their land development agreement.
So no one inspects the road if it's built?
They're inspected, and they're going to be inspected by Level, and then ultimately accepted through a dedication.
And who inspects it?
Level.
You, you inspect it?
Based on, based on what Level tells us, we can then go through acceptance.
Okay.
That's my argument.
Because there are, are, there are roads.
Yeah, any road technically can be accepted for approval and dedication, but the intention for this one, because they are, you know.
If it's never supposed to be our road, it's all taken in their road, you would not inspect it? It would not be inspected, cause that's the answer, the answer is not, we don't have.
It has to be public groupment to be inspected, right, and why the, the sewer, I don't know, acts, or lines, the, the ordinance.
Your ordinance requires that if you're building any new building, your new property, it's gotta be on a road built in township's name. So that's a whole nother issue, so you still have to build the township standard, cause you have another ordinance that says, you came about a house on a mud road.
And by the way, um, if these roads were paved, um, they, then they would be eligible to be turned over to township roads. Because the situation in Lake Valhalla is that half the roads are township roads, and the other half were never paved and left as mud roads.
And already, but.
You're only allowed.
Or roads in private property.
People said that they had the roads in Lake Valhalla.
Yeah, yeah, so roads that are in private. Private roads also needs to be built township standards. Regardless of whether.
But again, you're talking about a, a property, that's what you're.
I don't.
Right now, yes, that's the case, I don't know if that was the case.
But then if you renovate, just saying this way as if you're renovating your house, if you're renovating the roads, would you not need to have built township standards? That's my question.
That's my own.
That's my question for P S A's.
You do not, if there's somebody coming in to Lake Valhalla, wants to go in and renovate part of their road, they will just go in and do it. As long as they're not over their NIPSE size of, of, for the conservation district.
Correct, but when you have um, existing features.
Oh, I forgot, I.
From, from our people.
My thoughts.
So when, when you have existing features, you are generally allowed to maintain them, but if you expand them, then you lose your non-conformant status.
Correct, okay.
So just ask a quick question, if it's okay, sorry, Joe. Um, I don't know the answer to this, but using the analogy that you just said, if you need permits to build a deck, like you said, right? What happens if you do home improvement, things like that, you build, you know, you, you finish your basement, you build a deck, you do whatever. And then it's found out after the fact, you know, from your modifications to your private property. That you didn't go through the right process of getting permits, getting that stuff, what does the township do about something like that? That's sort of, I get analogous to the road.
From the zoning here and there, from the zoning officer, and you either have to knock it down, or if they determine.
Yeah, yeah.
That is a good, might get a lot.
You're definitely given a chance to comply, but if you are abstinent, you're gonna get fined and enforced on.
So someone from the township enforces something that was done on private property?
Yes, but I, I, yes, correct, but it. The difference.
It's built, and this is what I wanted to understand, it, I mean, what I'm hearing right now, I don't, I, I think I might not be right. That I don't think that you can enforce, if it is a private road, as long as it's not being changed, significantly changed.
Well, see, see, putting in nice um, speed bumps that should be uh, put on parking lots, because it's never approved.
I think that's, Julia, that is the question you asked.
I don't need to be there to sit and get rest, P S A's.
We have two comments that we can get back to, so we have, I'll let you go first, and I have your kind of.
Please, Zito, I'm on Shawnee Valley. And I have two things, clarification, what makes it a private road versus a private community? Because we have two entrances, so it's really not a private road, cause it's open to anybody.
It is still a private road.
The, the ownership is, is owned by the, the association, so.
Wouldn't that make it that anybody outside the community couldn't come in?
No, it's here a lot.
No, it's not a gate.
There's quite a gate we couldn't. There's a couple of other ungated.
Not suggesting a good gate, but.
Well, I suggested it.
Not my concern, exactly what you're saying, is that, if you're allowing the public, again.
Correct.
Um, you are in a different category than someone who puts up a gate, says only people can go by here, and agree to our um, uh, our rules.
But that's the gate where it decides that, it's not us.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, the difference between what's a private road and a private community. Because to me, a private road means the outside owner can't join.
This is actually the difference of that distinction, because almost, there are hardly any. Private roads that are not part of a private model. Now, now, they're not always developments that are under the Uniform Community Act, which is like Penn State, Shawnee Valor, uh, Valley only, uh. Shawnee Valley Owners Association, or, you know, Penn State CCP, places like that. But all of this originates at the land development phase, so all sorts of, like, like a planned residential development. In your case, it is a, generally, they are phased approvals for multiple planning time, there's one general tentative approval, and then. You must be a final phased approval. And upon that time, it is common for associations or applicants to offer their roads for public dedication. In which case, then the township is responsible for the maintenance and safety of it, whereas now. Your HOA has elect, elected at the time to maintain, now, I, I wasn't a supervisor, obviously, at the time that that happened. But the township either declined to accept it, or it was never offered to the township. So I think what we're seeing right now, is we have this debate over what to do over existing screw-ups versus new things, you know, in some of the land development. I think perhaps some of us think it makes sense to make sure that they're up to new standard, that in fact they are. And should kind of subdivision has to be up to township standards. Um, same with Franklin Hillman, I think with higher.
Point of recommendation, from what I, I know, and Joe would know better than anybody. Um, Shawnee Valley Drive was built to township standards, and the idea was it wasn't turned over, but. I think at some point, the residents decided that they didn't want it turned over then, because it couldn't be gated then, is that correct?
It's fine, man.
I just wanted to add my thing, Joe, real quick, and as far as an ordinance stuff, just food for thought, the safety issues. We said there was a first half on Shawnee Valley, and we saw the ambulance bikes coming. And the first thing I said to my husband is, I hope he's not coming down here. For me, medically, that's a safety issue, because we watched the ambulance have to stop.
Correct.
And crawl over, and then the back end hit. So if we have a choking child, or somebody in cardiac arrest, and I have to have that ambulance go nine speed bumps before I get to somebody's house. You're talking between life and death, because those are protected by.
Correct, yeah, that's, that's a concern of ours too, so it originally on the whole land development plans. A fire EMS service are both consulted, their respective chiefs are, uh, or captains are able to renew the plan to see if it's sufficient to meet their safety standards. So in all new development that exists, we're, I guess figuring out what we can do, or maybe.
They, they just, uh.
Circle back, yeah, because I, I think even on Shawnee Valley in Mount Nevo, that was opened at a later time. Which to me makes it an un-private road, because now we open it to two different sections, and to another community.
It's part of road because you, the HOA owns it. That's what makes it a private road.
Why don't we give it back?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can, you can, there's provisions in the, the.
You can, the HOA, and the board of the HOA, and you let, and then this board can choose if they want to accept it. Usually, they will only accept it if it's already meeting township's specifications. Um, and because township usually doesn't wanna pay for that, but they wanna say, you put it to township, and then we will maintain it thereafter.
And I will, what, listen, sorry, just to add, get that off the township standards. The Pennsylvania traffic calming guy, and he goes through, of course, all the things with the speed bumps and humps and all that. One thing that I don't know that everybody knows, cause this was news to me, is when you have someone like EMS come through for something. They're not allowed to do CPR, intubations, anything like that while they are on roads like this because of these bumps. So in this example, if you're right in the middle of this road, and you got seven speed bumps, they cannot perform actions like that on these roads.
Yes, and I have regular compressions in your.
Right.
Waiting, hold on, buddy, we gotta go.
Yes, yes.
And then even, you know, Steve Lee's also made comments about like, they came to respond to something like, went over one of these speed bumps. And I was like, holy shit, like, and then this like, felt like it destroyed the other side of their cars, they're coming through, so like.
I, I did, I have complaints from, uh, Bushfield and Brooks, and also comments from, showing buyer about the same thing.
I don't know.
But the feeling appears, some really dangerous conditions. Um, you wouldn't let those go because you don't consider it our responsibility. Or we're not, we're not, by the way, naked, our responsibility to say, this can't exist because it's dangerous, it's as simple as that.
Can't even ride a bike in the community.
You can't ride a bike.
You can't ride a bike in the community.
Within the first day or two, yeah. I, I mean, I have, I have some, I mean, to some degree, right now, this is still an inch away. Issues, and so it is a private road, we're looking at there are things that can be done. Um, I also know, and I've heard, not just from the president, from all people, and I like, that very much one is speed bumps, people has.
Probably speed bumps.
And, and I agree with you, and ultimately, it's not our decision, or others, for speed bumps to go there. I mean, right now, I don't consider a decision on whether people look like, we're trying to determine, is there maybe some legal element where they need to meet. Um, certain uh, code, um, to do it, that's what we're exploring.
Like the building code, the same thing.
If, if, if there is no e- existence of that, I personally don't know that we can do anything.
We can do anything we want.
We might be able to do, uh, even if it's a law, we can try, and then it can cost a township a hundred million dollars, but we possibly know what it is.
If we, if we try this, we're only going to a direct judgment. If the, if the judge says no, then we're, that's the end of it, if the judge says yes, then we're, then, then we can enforce something. But we don't even know until we go to judgment.
Colm, last, Colm, one last thing, I know, and I know that you're in like, very, I'm sorry, Joe. Like, within the first day or two of these bumps being put in on this road, somebody was riding a scooter, and they weren't painted yet. They hit it and were injured and had to, um, you know, go to the hospital or leave. And, and I don't even want to, to the kids.
Yeah, everywhere. I can count, soccer scooter wasn't like a.
Buyer's day.
That's sick.
It's a kid's scooter.
Yeah, but you couldn't see them, which I mean, that's just the, the beginning of a safety issue, is you couldn't see these bumps, and someone hit this thing and, you know.
Right, I think pretty clearly, I mean, one, two, three, so, and then, and then I will comment on what we'll do next.
Okay.
They have two limited liability individuals here that have to.
All, all peripheral side. Um, I think I need some homework, and I looked up the word public, as far as DOT is concerned. And it's access on the road from one road to another. That's not stopped for any reason, if it's open to the general public, that's really a public road. Now, I understand the township's position that it's not, but I think we need clear clarification on the definition, and I'm not a lawyer. Of public, that's number one, if I may, you can, it's fine, number two. Um, that will exceeds the building standards of roads today. Cause when it was put in, it was waiting to be passed to the township. And then over the gap of the dome, it's made out of concrete. Because back to that, they had to move it through when that was done back in the eighties and nineties. When the new section was put in, the township told them, they had to go back to their original design. And make sure that's what was carried through. That road has never been reduced from standards that were required as a, a, a road. So we have, the road is legal, I have a question about, uh, the, how you're defining public. And we have an engineer from the township that says they don't need safety codes according to Pennsylvania Penda. The, the, the speed bumps versus the speed humps, we have both, humps and bumps. Um, so if, if Penda has already had a thing or about specifically stating what they consider is safe. Doesn't the township have a responsibility to me, as a township person? And to everybody driving through that open road, that that road is safe? You're saying to me right now, and I'm not trying to be nasty here, that you don't have any responsibility for that road. I can appreciate that, maybe you can prove that, but I can't understand how you can turn around and, and wash you up the safety target. Legals of something happening excuses you, you're not negligent, you realize it's there, you've been told it's there. I work in the news media issue, I'm a federal safety inspector. That wouldn't have a problem, and, and going into a situation where I see something that's wrong, has to be fixed. So I'm not pushing, don't misunderstand what I'm saying, I don't even use the road. I'm in the old section, I don't have speed bumps, I'll just go out the illegal entrance. So to me, I'm just a concerned person, because I've seen my, my development literally improve. Over the last two years, because no one is willing to face up to reality and take the responsibility that something needs to be done. And the only place we have to go is the township.
No, I, and I can.
That is, sir, you can sue the HOA yourself if you want to spend my money.
Um.
The township, the way you're flying, and I understand that, but all of you here can sue the HOA privately if that's what you wanna do.
I respect that, I do, and I understand that, but you um, are somewhat isolated from the situation. That has grown in our development, and I respect that, and I respect the fact of your statement, because I do fully agree, we have the right to do that. But if.
I would argue, you have more rights to the HOA than the media, for example.
I, I, I probably agree with that, but the reality of it is, what happens if it's not a person from our HOA? That drives down that road that connects two public roads?
Right.
And they get killed, or they kill a resident.
And you still.
That's gonna be a real negative.
Every board, group, power of the city. Your HOA's decision to allow people to come through there, you can put in a rest notice sign, you can put a, I'm not saying you should do these, I'm just trying to explain.
I, and I.
How, how it is a, I mean, I think it's weird that it's a public road too, I think it's weird, I don't know why it's like that, shouldn't be like that.
It, it goes between two major roads, well, you know how much traffic we get going to Shawnee, Mountain Cover House?
Sure.
It, it's, that's an unfathomable, so to turn around and say that's a private road, you, they wouldn't need to put spike strips out, and you're gonna get a complaint about that.
And, and I would say.
And I would claim a shot, it's like, I would.
No, I understand, but that's how you do, the HOA is liable, that's, that's, that's the thing, it, we are. Listening, and because we care about this issue, we don't actually know if we have any authority on this, other than the original approval. Or any theoretical additional approval, and I think that that's where we're gonna have to leave.
I mean, and, and we're trying to determine if there is any, we hear this, we're trying to see if there's any way. Not just our responsibility, I just said, like, how can you hear that they cannot do it, I don't, we don't know if we can, if we're allowed to do it.
So, so if I may just give you my box of views. Just one clarification, any improvements done on that road, don't have to do permitting?
I don't know, it, it depends on the nature of, of those improvements.
Hmm, good answer.
Right, I'm saying, unfortunately, it is.
There's someone who's gonna get a little drunk when you, is that for under?
Proven by.
Yes, well, no, we're approved. Yeah, four hundred would approve.
A legal driveway?
Yes.
That would be a new driveway, that would be, um, you have a driveway permit, you have a driveway permit, that would.
However, however, it is a private road, there would not be a driveway permit to the to the level.
Yeah, two driveways to.
The HOA, you know what, you don't have those permits, so that HOA would all probably be an enforcer on that.
Okay, and and the driveway they didn't put in, they had to put up hind foot walls and fill them up and actually make something there, would that be a permitted use? Is that a construction site?
I don't.
Depends on the, uh.
Well, the capable people are, they put walls up and put a drive line.
Without knowing what the declarations of covenants and restrictions and conditions are in the HOA, we cannot answer that question. You need to give us those restrictions and covenants and conditions and say, this is what we can do in the HOA, now what can the township do?
Right, that's in the document that was written at the time that the treaty was created.
I gave you nothing.
I don't believe that that is the correct kernel.
I gave the number that I had, the number you have exactly the same.
I don't believe that's the kernel, but it's done in nineteen eighty nine, when the Shawnee Valley stage one was done.
Ah, yes, one one thing.
And and it may well be that it has that in there, but it's a forty five, forty page document, you can't ask a question for your own paper.
Okay, okay.
You can, you can, I heard someone requesting that the county gives me a definitive wording on public road
spoil the day.
that stands up.
And so in our ordinance, so we we could, we wouldn't be able to refer you to the second, it says, you know.
I have another thing to say here, that'll be the last one to say, which is, I'm only on this board for one reason, and that's to protect the rights and safety of the public. If this board is gonna equivocate like this, well, is it an officer, what do you even know, I don't belong here, okay? I'm leaving.
Right, alright, go ahead. And other than, I it's not, you know, about equivocating, I I don't believe in, you know, everybody can get mad and upset about these things, I don't believe in private communities having private roads anyway, so next time you wanna build one.
Good for you.
Maybe, well, yeah, but but all I'm saying is, that's not acceptable, and neither is this public safety situation. We're gonna look at both of them, but that's all we can do at the moment, is no.
I think you don't.
Absolutely.
So, uh, at this point, pursuant to the sunshine, I'll have to give two more things we can adjourn.
I know, but I think it's probably not.
Cool.
Yes, yes, so I'm gonna ask for a motion for adjournment, uh, so it's.
Where's Jay?
We're about to add, it's three technical items of that committee.
Oh, okay, I just, okay, I do, I have a comment.
Go ahead, yeah, alright, so.
This is.
Yeah, your motions you had, and in Janitor business, consider we schedule the February fourteenth meeting to February seventh, also a six week. Oh, I started.
February seventh?
Yes.
You can see why.
But you just want to add an add to the agenda item, you're writing a first, first grant of agenda item, I'll motion add to the agenda item.
Motion, I, I'll bear a second, so.
So third question, then?
Get that in a second.
Why didn't you fucking?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, I'll move that we approve item J, the consideration of your schedule of February fourteenth meeting to February seventh at six p.m. Wait here a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Up there, no questions?
Um, yeah, I just was, all this you hear about the school bus and the communities?
On this one, we're moving the meeting from fourteen to seven.
I wrote it down.
Okay, no questions on that.
At the end, alright, all unfair, alright, okay, now we can do another public comment out of the agenda.
I just have one comment, all this that you just heard about the school bus on Hollow Road, maybe make a mental thought before you approve any other developments with school bus stops on Hollow Road.
Uh, that interests.
Yeah.
I don't, no, I never think of that.
Let me tell you.
Talking to the bodies, recent bodies have never approved though, so.
Okay, but just, um, future development on Hollow Road and school bus stops or other developments, Mosher's Knob Road, whatever, because I had to bring my kids down to the bottom of Mosher's Knob and Shawnee Church Road and Hollow Road to take my kids to the school bus stop, that's where I stopped with, I live a mile away, but if you were gonna do that development up there, which thank God we got park service and everything, but if there's any other stuff up there, are they all gonna be bringing their kids down to that bus stop, and you're gonna have this whole mess all over again? Just mental thought.
Appreciate you in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Excellent.
I should let you shut it, may I?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Been saying so long. Uh, I, this goes back to uh the presentation on the uh uh, male health for a horror.
You speak for one second, man, you have her name?
The show. Uh, the uh the alcohol treatment center, I I I'm interested, because I didn't hear any of the traffic or the uh parking uh data to include visitors to those, to that uh institution. And from personal experience, people who are in an institution like that have, do have a lot of visitors, and a lot of people who are concerned about it. So I think if it wasn't considered, it should be considered, uh, the traffic and the parking arrangements for visitors to that type of an institution.
So the, what I can say, just for clarification, is that all of that is finalized at the land development stage, uh, but they did do preliminary engineering, so that is taken into consideration for the conditional use part. Should we approve to conditional use, then proceed to land development, where then they would actually have to approve all their stuff and um, they they have to do a little approval, because the use itself is going to be separate from the user.
I I, so they don't have approval, abuse approval?
Yeah, that's what that hearing is about.
Uh. Correct.
Ah.
Yeah, so so.
Got it.
Having hearing will continue on March thirteenth.
Okay, good.
If you want, yeah.
This is the long.
Dude, we used to start at seven, and before that, they used to start at seven thirty, you know, I'm glad we started six, but.
Stop the clock, six thirty one, midnight eleven o'clock on Monday night.
That is unfortunate, at least we live. Alright, any other public comment?
This is um for Mr. Karasak, so I I think you had mentioned that the Watergate Wellness had withdrawn their counter suit?
Well, they never have a counter suit, they filed a federal court suit directly against the township and other individuals saying that the township discriminated against them, that his bait and switch have used their position, et cetera, in denying the conditional use application, basically saying, yeah, you can have a conditional use in R one, but we're not approving yours. So that federal suit is now being asked to be dismissed by Watergate, I'm sure based upon the fact that they lost at three levels, they lost the trial court level, they lost at the common, uh, wealth court level, and now they've lost at the P A Supreme Court level. So I'm sure they're saying, we can't pursue this, or we're gonna get countersued back by the township, and I would certainly tell the township to do that if they would pursue that case based upon the wins that the township now has under its belt in that case.
And and it also includes that suit against Delta Watergate too, the township.
Whoever they sue, I I don't remember, and it's one township, so. And and everybody always depending. As far as I know, the request is to dismiss the suit with prejudice, my concern is the township here, I don't I care about the other people, but let me just say, that's where my focus is, I'm sure it would deal with the other cases too, I can think.
Oh, it's all mine.
I mean, I have to look at the paper work again and see what it says, but.
I've got it, Murrow Council, yeah, Murrow Council, and the people that they they didn't like.
Yes.
Smith and Conch, Smith and Tucker, advisors, Robert Love and Time, Brian Barrett, Earl, Delaware Watergate, John Schumaker, and William Buzzer.
Everybody was me.
Yeah, does that have the precipitate discontinue?
Uh, that is the original, uh. Yes.
Okay, so then that deals with all those people according to what I'm hearing.
Excellent, thank you, and with this one, with prejudice means they can't refile?
Yes.
Means they can't refile, so.
Correct.
Alright.
Anybody else, if we go another six minutes, we'll make it to nine, haven't even three hours. Everybody good?
I'm just gonna say something, but I think I'll wait till next time.
Okay, alright, February seven, yes, thank you, your motion you adjourned.
Maybe motion.
Motion on Mr. Holmes, I can, I myself, all the big.